I would like to call this meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulter.
Here.
Councilmember Dubala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Place to be, me.
Great. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening. Just want to cover a couple of items. Oh, and actually, before I start, Happy International Women's Day to all my colleagues. So.
Wore it up.
So, and all of the women in the city. So, we value all of the work that you contribute to the city and to your families. So, tonight, we will be covering a couple of voting sessions, items. Second reading ordinance approving installation of traffic calming on Second Avenue. We will be doing the first reading ordinance approving the FY 23 Budget Amendment Number Five. And also, the resolution providing for temporary street closures. And then, following those, that voting session, we will have a discussion on council priorities. And that would be basically continuing our conversation that happened during our retreats in January. For the upcoming agenda, on Wednesday, March the 15th, we will have, again, a legislative update, and we will have one of those tonight, as well as a voting session on the second reading ordinance approving the FY 23 Budget Amendment Number Five. We'll also have a work session on the procurement of police in car video cameras. And we'll also continue our discussion on council priorities. On March the 22nd, I just want to give my colleagues a heads up, because it will be a pretty packed night, and we may need to start our meeting a little early. We'll make sure that we let everyone know. But we will have, tentatively, a youth council update. We'll also have a couple of presentations, the Police Department Annual Report. And we'll also have a presentation on the financial forecast. And that will be happening on the Wednesday, March the 22nd. We will also have a voting session on a resolution adopting our council priorities, as well as a single reading ordinance authorizing procurement of police in car video cameras. We will also have a work session, providing the council with an overview of the 2024 budget process. The goal of that work session is to make sure that colleagues are acclimated to how the overall schedule for the budget takes place, things you need to consider just around the tax rates and public hearings, and all of the logistical things that we are required to do when it comes to establishing a tax rate for the city. Also, just as a reminder, on Wednesday, March the 29th, the city will not, council will not meet. On Wednesday, April the 5th, Passover will begin at sunset. And so, the council will not meet on April the 5th. Next, to, on Monday, April the 10th, the council will have a special meeting. We may need to start that meeting instead of 7:30 at 6:30. And that is when we will have a presentation from the county on the Minor Master Plan, preliminary recommendations specifically as it relates to the Minor Master Plan, including the Washington Advances site. And so, just as a reminder, we moved that meeting to Monday, April the 10th, to allow more time for members of council, as well as the community, to ask questions. Okay, and so, with that, oh, our last item, on Wednesday, April the 12th, the city council will have our regular meeting at 7:30. We will have our Arbor Day proclamation, as well as a presentation on the city manager's proposed FY 2024 budget, and a work session on 37 Oswego Ave. So, there's a lot of things that are happening. And so, I want to quickly confirm with our clerk that we don't have any matters for the record tonight?
Correct.
Correct. All right. So, with that, we will be able to begin our legislative update. Is Ann available?
I am.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ann Seacott, our legislative aide down in Annapolis. And there's been a lot of activity happening this week, so looking forward to your update.
Oh, boy. Yeah, I'm, it, there is a lot going on. We're down to 33 more days during session. Monday, the 20th, is the crossover deadline, when House bills need to get over to the House. It's, I'm sorry, when House bills need to get over to the Senate, and Senate bills need to get over to the House without additional delays. And so, hearing, so they're, they're, they're doing a lot of voting right now. They vote a lot in committee, they're voting frequently, and then they go to the floor of the House and Senate, where they debate a lot and vote bills. Today, there were debates, for example, on the cannabis reform bill, as well as the constitutional amendment regarding reproductive rights. So, they're, they're spending a lot of time, and lots of other things, too. There, there are lots of other bills taking up a lot of time. So, it's, we're going to be in for some very long days, which is very typical for leading up to the crossover deadline. I want to thank Councilmember Fulter for, speaking of late days, sticking it out last night until 7:30 or so, to testify in the Senate in favor of the just cause eviction legislation. I think it was very much appreciated that a lot of the proponents of the bill stayed. It was the second to the last bill, and they started everything very late in that committee yesterday. But, you know, I thought the testimony was very effective from Councilmember Fulter and everyone else. And we'll see about the bill. It's, you know, we still have a very high hurdle with that bill, even though it is enabling legislation. We, we have, just at this point, I think, not enough local governments, local county governments, really pushing for it. We have several, which is nice, but I think we need maybe a few more to reach a critical mass. But we never say never, and we'll be working hard to try to get that bill through. And then, just to acknowledge that the unlawful restrictive covenants bill that Councilmember Small testified on, it has passed both the House and Senate. The Senate bill's passed the Senate, the House bill has passed the House, and now they cross over. So, it's not a done deal until they've finished the process. But they look good, I think, for passage. Wanted to mention the Safe Roads Act that I know is a priority for the city. So, the, my latest information is that there's an attempt to try to, on, on behalf of the State Highway Administration, to make commitments, strong enough commitments, to almost everything that's in the bill, to do it without then a bill being necessary. It's an interesting dynamic going on, on very many issues in Annapolis. You know, with the, the transition in the administration, I am, we are all seeing a lot of hesitancy on behalf of legislators, especially those in leadership, to push something, you know, force something on the new administration. They want to give the new administration time to get everybody in place, to get their priorities in order, and, and see where there might be enough agreement that there isn't a need to put it in a piece of legislation, that there probably are some things that this administration wants to do differently than the last administration, and a willingness to work with some of the advocates on some of those issues. So, so we're seeing a lot of that in a lot of different areas. And so, you know, I, the, the good news is, I think we're going to see some real movement in the area of pedestrian safety. I don't know that we'll see an actual bill, but whether a bill passes or not, as long as the objective is met, you know, that's, that's the, that's the win. And then, I think I had mentioned that on the voting bills, I think I'd mentioned last week, it, I, I think we have a ways to go in the Maryland Legislature before enough folks are comfortable with ranked choice voting, or anything other than, any other form of voting than what we currently have. And I do not believe those voting bills are going to pass, are going to move this session.
Great. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Ann, I just want to make sure, like, you're not, you don't know that I'm looking you in the eye. I'm looking you in the eye, as far as I'm, and I just want.
I'm looking at your hat. I love it.
Oh, thank you. That, the turkey feathers are Jaleel's, and I found it on the way here. Here's the thing, I just wanted to say to you, because the, the update, the bill chart update came on March 5th, and that's my birthday. I turned 50. And so, like, when I was scrolling through it, and I was thinking about, like, I don't know, all the things that one could grill you about, if they, like, just because of the way they get down over there, versus looking through it to figure out what was going on. And I looked down, and I saw the thing that just, like, it just, at that point, it just said "Pass the House", but it was highlighted in yellow. I did a dance around the room. And so, to know they're past both houses is, is really meaningful to me, because it's so forward-thinking on the person who wrote it. And I just have to thank you again for the opportunity to go, and the amount of effort that was semi-Herculean to get me to there, given the timing. And you're considered in learned opinion. And so, one of the things that I would say, if you're Karen, so that's all real, and nerdily, if you see a good piece of press about it, and a professional thing, and it doesn't have to have anybody's name in it or anything, but if you see a good piece of press, can you send it to me so I can send it to my mom?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, that being said, it would be foolhardy for anyone to assume that an institutional organization of a state that has never shown any real consideration or concern for the issues that are presenting themselves, that they will suddenly begin to play nice. And even though this is not a feather in a very stylish hat for a different reason, what those people tend to say is that the game is sold and not told. But I'm going to reverse that and say that would be ridiculous. And as we sit here with a very porous town pedestrian and traffic safety mechanism and policy, do not go gentle into that particular good night. And if, and if you need somebody to walk around and talk about that, I can talk about it from two different counties. But that would be absurd. And it would be another example of people who think that, you know, the gaming the system by the political machinations of relationships is better than making hard and fast rules, or actually doing the job associated with being a legislator. And so, I hate to walk around and go up there and embarrass people. And that would be wrong. It would be wrong for them to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Dubala? Oh, sorry, Ann, if you have a response?
I, I, I hear you.
Excellent. Councilmember Dubala?
On the subject of S H A, I was going to ask, we have a new transportation. I'm also a little suspicious of settling these things without the bill. The bill is there for a reason. We have a new Transportation Secretary. Do we also now have a new S H A head? Is that coming?
I need to look up to see if that person.
For my colleague, that in the big splashy plush release that they did of all their shiny new people who are different, nobody from S H A was in it.
Yeah, I noticed that. That's why I'm asking.
So, so, just to be fair, there are a lot, so they certainly did name all the secretaries and everything. There are a lot of deputy secretary positions that we have not seen filled or replaced. I mean, they still, they have somebody in there acting and all. We assume a lot of them will be replaced. You know, I think that you, the governor gets to bring on the secretaries, and then the secretaries get to bring on the deputy secretaries and the executive directors of different administrations and things like that. So, that's just not going to happen as quickly as any of us, and the, probably they would like. So, that's happening in an ongoing basis. I haven't looked up, and I, and I'm happy to look up, if S H A has anybody new there now. It, it just, it's happening sort of little by little.
It would seem.
Those other positions.
Question for this particular discussion about how best to get S H A to make changes. And then, I wanted to see if there was any update on Delegate Charcutian's bills.
So, yes, so, the, I'm sorry, the, so, let's see. So, the stop sign bill was voted unfavorably. The, the, I just need to find it here on my list.
I think it was last week, I think.
I'm sorry, say again?
I think you said that last week.
Okay, yes. I'm just going.
Pass the condo bill. In the House.
One, one of her bills, the, the.
101, the one about the condo thingy.
The, the, so, the Senate version of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Bill for, for low income, the targets for low-income housing, that bill is moving in the Senate. So, with the way that, Councilmember Dubala, you know this, but the way that legislation works, this is cross-filed, which means there are identical bills in the House and the Senate. And the Senate bill is moving, doesn't mean the House bill won't or can't, but right now, that's, that's what's moving. So, there is absolute progress on that air, on that front.
Great. And the condo bill?
And the condo bill, that's moving. That has passed the House. The Clean Energy Equipment Bill has passed the House.
Okay, thank you.
So, those, so she's got two out of three, well, three, two out of four right now.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Small?
I'm sorry. While we're on, on that, and we're sort of talking about the relative reluctance to, to deal with or address traffic issues, I did notice that one of the bills that did get unfavorably dealt with was the bill to allow for the mechanisms that are already on traffic signals or whatever to, I don't know, over police or police, depending upon what you think about it, the traffic people. I can understand whether there's some reasonable things about that, and given the way that the, the structure of getting a driver's licenses here and the, and the relative populations that we have here. But I'm curious about is whether or not that reluctance was related to potentially the increased revenue part of it, and the discretion on the revenue, or if it was the Fourth Amendment protection, search and seizure-type things, of the kind of police state argument?
So, I'll be honest with you.
Just curious about it.
Yeah, I did not watch the voting session on that bill, the, the cameras on, on stop signs. I can go back and look at, watch that to hear what was said about it.
No, don't, you're, you're going to be busy. I can go look at it. I just was wondering if you knew. It's totally cool. I know you're busy.
So, well, so, so what's interesting is, you know, you've got two bills, right? You have the one that, that is, that is really purely about cameras on, on stop signs. And then, you've got another one that was Delegate Charcutian's that was, that included also this progressive fine. And so, I did watch what happened on the progressive fine one. I just didn't watch the other one.
Councilmember Fulter?
Oh, no. I just want to thank you again. You were really kind to sit there and wait for me. I'm sure that you had other things that you needed to be doing during those six hours. And, you know, I was certainly nervous, but I look forward to doing it again. And as you saw, I'm cool with sitting around six hours and waiting for my turn. And so, don't think that, that you can't have me back. You know, Shayna waited so long, and she's never going to want to do this again, like, it's fine. And I look forward to getting more experience and feeling less nervous when I do it.
Great.
Well, I want to thank you, Ann, again. You know, we find out often about testimony and things pretty, pretty late in the game. And so, we have very little time to prepare, to, to speak, and to, to go to Annapolis. And, and you have been masterful, giving us a heads up and working with us to get our ducks in a row so that we're able to be responsive. And I also definitely want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Fulter and Councilmember Small, for, for, for testifying this week. This is something that really, really, really is critically important, to make sure that the bills that are important to the residents of the City of Tacoma Park are, are, are being advocated for, and that our, our voice is there, and that we're at the table. So, thank you all so much. And I know Ann will be, will, will be going through the next bill chart, and we'll be waiting to see what's coming up next.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments on voting items? And just as a reminder for folks, voting items are, tonight are the second reading ordinance approving installation of traffic calming on Second Avenue, first reading ordinance approving the FY 23 Budget Amendment Number Five, and resolution providing for temporary street closures. Great, let me get your mic.
Second Landman Ward 1. I am the former chairperson of the Complete Safe Streets Committee, which served in the last administration, last council. And I wanted to, first of all, thank my own Councilmember Fulter, who I spoke with about the pending ordinance. And I appreciated comments that she made in a blog to her constituents about her decision that she's going to abstain on her vote on this pending ordinance. And to comment that, at the request of the council last time, the Complete Safe Streets Committee made some detailed recommendations to the council about revising existing ordinances with respect to traffic calming and sidewalk installation to revise the way that the city handles these things. to revise the way that the city handles these things. And I appreciate that this is something that interests several of the existing council members, new and previous, to make the process that the city uses for petitioning for these ordinances or for these installations to be less based on the squeaky wheel principle and more based on evidence and on data available about what is, where they're gonna make the most difference and where their installation will protect the most people and not just who is better at figuring out how to do the petitions and count, and contact their council members. This is not to say that it's not justified in the place where it's currently planned, but that it makes a difference that this be done right. And I know that this was requested of the staff and the, and legal counsel. It's been a long time since the, the work was done by the previous committee. And rather than just move forward and keep approving them because they've been petitioned for, I would really like to see the recommendations that have, I know that you requested that the staff do this. I'd really like to see that done and for this to be the last time that one of these proposals is just taken forward and, and handled and paid for with taxpayers' money without revising those regulations and following the recommendations, the ones that you agree with, and implementing them through revisions to the ordinances. So thank you for listening to your, the recommendations, which I think that the previous council thought were good ones and making the changes and making the process evidence-based and protecting as many of our children and residents as you can based on equity, inclusion and data and not just on squeaky wheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so we, those have, yep, those have been shared. We can re-up them in your inbox. And so just to confirm, so you're talking about the complete safe streets recommendations that were shared? All right. Do we have any more public comments on voting, voting items? Okay, wonderful. So now we're moving on to general public comments. Do we have any general public comments today?
So the question of the year is to be or not to be wearing a mask. Wherever you go, that is always the question. Okay, so good evening again to the mayor and city council and the city residents. My name is Karen Elrich from Ward Five. And tonight I'm here representing the Pollinator Group, which is part of Climate Action Coffee, which is part of Tacoma Park Mobilization. And we hope to be here on an ongoing basis to form the city and encourage participation in one of the most pressing issues of our times, climate change. The goal of the Pollinator Group is to find local solutions to climate change by supporting wildlife habitat, biodiversity and food security by promoting the use of native plants. My reason for being here is to promote this year's activities to engage residents in celebrating the 2023 National Pollinator Week, which is June 19th through the 25th, throughout the spring and highlight a few of our other activities. This year, we're doing something new, a native plant swap. We'll also table several times, providing information about native plants and nurseries, removing invasives, alternative to pesticide use to control mosquitoes and plant giveaways on certain dates to visit at our table. Friends of Native Trees in Tacoma will join us this year to promote native trees. We are planning a third native plant garden tour and I hope to participate in T P's Fourth of July parade. Look for us at T P S Co-op on Earth Day, Bell Ziegler Park on April 30th, Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church on Mother's Day, Crossroads Farm Market on June 21st and Old Town Tacoma on June 25th. Our garden tours and garden sign details will be announced at a later date. You can find our schedule on T P Mobilization website in the new future. Additionally, we continue to work with our city public works department to provide assistance with the removal of invasives in our city parks. And many members of our group cross over to the Food Forest Group, which you guys know about, and have worked to establish the first ever food forest here in Tacoma Park. We appreciate the support of Anna Machee John, who has provided to us and asked the city to expand the support provided to her to establish more native species in the city's parks and bioswells. We ask the city to look for opportunities to promote wider community level awareness and engagement on this so very important topic. And as you work on formulating your new goals, please remember the importance of taking care of our public lands to ensure the sustainability of our city as we face the challenge of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry for coming here again. I, I wouldn't come here except I'm so damn depressed about the situation with my son and people with developmental and intellectual disabilities and nothing being done. Oh, by the way, Happy International Women's Day. I, I actually went to one of these conferences a few years ago and I was told that people with disabilities, it's not a women's issue. Who in the hell takes care of these people? People with development, intellectual disabilities, mostly 80%, 90% of us women, including me for my son. And why in the heck are we not a women's issue? It seems like we're always never anybody's issue. I mean, I mean, I care for the environment and thank you all for sticking up for the environment because it affects everybody. But, you know, my, it's like people like my family don't belong. It's like, and, 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 and by the way, thank the mayor. You said you're gonna come to our Parents' Special needs Adults Meeting in April. Appreciate it. And some of you have come and Mr. Siemens has come. And, and I, I appreciate it, but you need to do something. And I went to that meeting, I wish that I could speak to that lady who was just on from state, I guess the state Capitol. I was in a council meeting in Montgomery County with Evan Glass supported yesterday. I had to do Zoom because I wasn't feeling well. And, and it's like, you, you just talk and they don't do anything. I mean, what do I have to do? Tell me what I have to do. I wish I had a law degree, but I don't. What do I have to do to get help? I'm sorry, my son's gonna end up in the next couple of years living on the street. And it really scares me. He's all I've got. He's my only child. I'm sorry. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Do we have any other comments on? Hello?
I thought you were falling. That scared me.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
I got issues, so like, I, I really, I really thought you may have been falling down.
Oh, I thank you for your Dylan Thomas reference. Just hit the arrow keys. Good evening, Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, Ward Three. Formerly of Ward Two, but you guys dumped me into Ward Three last year. Yeah, getting up to five. Story of the footrest. Towards the end of the fiscal year, my department and large government organization had money left over. I said, return it to the general fund for other uses. My supervisor said, use it. The rationale was if we don't use it, we'll get less money next year. I protested that supervisor thought protecting the office turf was more important than fiscal responsibility. The result, I got a footrest I never used. But the office got its requested funding for the next year. Moral of the story isn't hard to discern. That's often how governments work. Tacoma Park has had three incarnations of city manager so far in 2023. We're not even a quarter of the way through the year. One city manager, two employees co-acting as, one employee now acting as, that's four people so far. And now Tacoma Park is looking for an official interim city manager, incarnation four, as the city looks for a permanent city manager, incarnation five. That's six people who will be in charge of the city government in 2023, at least so far. In both theory and practice, you, the council, are the stable management arm of the city government. When you look at tax rates and tax bills and the budget as a whole, it's important to understand that taxes have already risen for most people in Tacoma Park due to increasing property values. Tacoma Park Property Tax Map shows the tax info for every property in the city. That's a line across there and your map looks like that. Up top left, you'll see current property values. You can check that. Percentage change in property values for every single property in the city. Just expand that, click on the property and you'll get the information right there. People everywhere will try to protect their turf. But you've gotta remember, you folks as a council, you're in charge. And a notice in the Washington Post will say that. This is a notice in the Washington Post in April of 2022. Look at the second line there or the first one under the heading. The city council of the city of Tacoma Park proposes to increase real property taxes. It does not say staff wants to increase taxes. It does not say that somebody else wants to increase taxes. It says you want to increase taxes. It's important for you to understand as you go through the budgeting process that it's your decision. In conclusion, please assess the real needs for the city, not the wants, and budget appropriately. The people of Tacoma Park don't need a footrest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any other general public comments?
We have two online commentators. We have Jacqueline Moore followed by Paul Hubner.
Great. Jacqueline Moore, you have the floor.
My name is Jacqueline Moore and I live in Ward Two. I know the council's looking forward to presenting their budget priorities tonight. Over the past several weeks, I've noticed many of you coming to grips with ongoing operating fund deficits. I heard the mayor say as much during the March first meeting. The city has outspent revenues year after year and has consistently raised property taxes above the rate of inflation. Another deficit in the FY22 approved budget was only avoided by the infusion of 1.19 million dollars of ARPA funds. It's clear that spending practices are topsy-turvy. The previous council approved spending 34 millions when expected income was only 27 million. The finance director made clear last week that the anticipated $7 million shortfall for this year has risen to a $9.3 million deficit. If the staff presents another maintenance of effort budget instead of one that reflects the constant yield rate, we can all expect significant property tax increases. Increases projected to be as high as 14%, a five cent per hundred dollars increase equivalent to over 59 cents per hundred dollars or more. This tax increase combined with the substantial increases in property assessments places a massive burden on homeowners that needs to be recognized by the mayor and the council. People don't pay tax rates, they pay tax dollars based on both assessments and the tax rate. If the budget approval process proceeds as it has in the past, it will make the mayor and the council the bad guys. You will be the ones who have to tell the staff no. The job description of each department head includes producing a budget for their department. The mayor and council need to direct each department head to create a budget at constant yield, at the current tax rate and at their wish list or maintenance of effort rate. They should be specifically directed to include what cuts in staff and their services will be required with each version. Another realistic suggestion made by the previous city manager was to offer cuts to achieve 3%, 5% and 7% reductions to their proposed budgets. The old way of doing business is no longer acceptable. The interim city manager should be directed to submit a budget based on your guidelines. If cuts are necessary, the manager should provide the mayor and council with multiple options. One final thought, I've heard several of you mention that you're interested in receiving input regarding budget issues from a more demographically representative contingent of residents. This is an excellent, welcomed and much-needed approach. What have you done so far to solicit this type of participation? Are your strategies working? If so, can these strategies be duplicated and applied to other topics and concerns where you need resident input as you work to make our city a better place for all? While I applaud and eagerly anticipate the first scheduled open budget meeting, I wonder if meetings in larger spaces like the New Hampshire Recreation Center and our public school places would be an option, spaces would be an option. Residents might be more comfortable coming to meetings held at the schools their children attend and in the event spaces in some of our high-rise buildings. You have to go through the online booking system to use a Montgomery County Public School space. It's wise to book their spaces as soon as possible. I've included the link to this booking system in the written comments that I will send to you later. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Hubner.
Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward Three. As I'm confident that all of you know, this month marks the end of temporarily increased SNAP benefits for some 43 million Americans, many in our city. The average household will lose $95 a month for groceries and some recipients will lose hundreds of dollars a month in food assistance. Those families most affected are the ones with children. I urge you to direct the ARPA manager to present himself to this council and the public and present a specific and directed plan for immediate relief and the dollar figures allocated or present within the ARPA funds. I need not remind you that childhood poverty in Maryland accounts for 12% of Maryland residents and we know the rate is much higher in portions of our small town. We're also quite aware of the long-term effects of hunger on childhood development and the oncoming loss of school lunches will be felt all too soon. The city recently had some $871,000 in ARPA direct cash assistance funds remaining and has been using SNAP recipients as an easily accessible metric to identify those most in need. SNAP beneficiaries should automatically qualify for any newly identified benefits or money within any additional, without any additional burden on staff to verify their eligibility. We can only hope that our newly hired manager, ARPA manager, is already moving expeditiously in this direction. We merely request a public acknowledgement to have it on the record. Thank you for serving.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Do we have any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to council comments. Councilmember Small.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm really gonna try and stick to the, to the number if you wanna put it up. Okay, first of all, look what happens when people actually really like get it on with regard to the policy issues in a town. Everybody that came in here today said really awesome things. Everybody, everything was terribly credible. And the fact that all these things are terribly credible is alarming. But I could say some things about that. First of all, invasives are one of the veins of my existence since I was little and I saw the thing about kudzu. And so anybody who wants to help with invasives, particularly in, in Ward Six area or near Sligo, I'd be happy to do that. Also, if you guys have milkweed seeds, I would like to plant some so that the butter, so the monarchs will survive on the way south. Additionally, or north, whichever way it is. With regard to traffic, I tremendously appreciate the statements that were made by the former committee chair. I'm terribly alarmed at the shenanigans that happened in Annapolis, well, and here. But I appreciate the fact that you would come in and say that in advance of both the priorities and the budget. With regard to things like noise and the development of children and whatnot, those are pre-sent issues and omnipresent issues with regard to the things that may happen on this council. And one of the things that I would say is, is that like, this is where we live, this is what we do. And if it's gonna be a thing that is supposed to be romantic and have, in the classical sense in that, you know, it's got rules and vision and what, self-selecting people, we're gonna do it while I'm on here. So have no fear. My professional opinion is this. Again, it was my job to present the budget to a group of members like this for, for consecutive budgets. There are a couple of different ways that we do it, that we did it. One of them was a pie in the sky budget from the staff. One of them is a hard cut. And the third one was like, what's gonna be the caretaker budget? And when you have people who don't have a lot of money to use, they tend to use the caretaker budget and the cuts. And so they, they're very specific about making sure where the money goes and why and whatnot. And so if you wanna not get fired, you gotta be able to do that every year, even if you've never done it before. So now I'm really good at it because I'm risk averse because I went to law school. So don't worry. The last thing about that is that I will expressly say in the last 20 seconds that I have that it is of no use or skill to propose anything other than a caretaker budget based on the constant yield rate. Since in large part, a lot of the decisions that were previously made were either excoriated here in this room by me or we've talked about here as not having been actually brought to the table- here as not having been actually brought to the table to have been addressed. I'm sorry, I tried. But it so far as that is true, I would argue that the level of competency from previous members and the inadvertent fortune of having someone who crossed the Rubicon into Old Black Man on Sunday means that, like, this is where I live, and the theories of disinterestedness that are supposed to animate city-states that were outlined by Socrates and then Plato wrote down, and then Jurgen Habermas regurgitated because people like to market things over and over again but not admit where they come from, are now on this thing. So don't worry about it.
Councilmember, let me turn off the lecture. Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you. I want to make a connection between the request for the city to be more engaged and have a more robust effort to, to take care of our environment. I thank Karen Elrich for that representation of the needs and requests of the Pollinator Group and Climate Action Coffee. Kind of in that same vein, I want to invite particularly Ward Three residents to a cleanup of Sligo Mills Neighborhood Conservation Area next Wednesday at 1:30. This is Montgomery Parks organizing it. I plan to be there. I will put this out in my blog and my, or my updates that I send out. So I hope to see many of you to pull invasives and get rid of trash at, at Sligo Mills Conservation Area. There's a lot more to do, as Karen noted, in terms of our opportunities with, with, within the city to take care of our environment. And I do hope we get a lot of folks at the events that you've mentioned that you would be at. And I want to also hold up in terms of staff participation, Anna Machet-John, who's been a very helpful staff person that encourages volunteer activism, which I haven't always found the case, but she has. And working with her previously, I was impressed with her competence and her willingness to accept volunteer, volunteers working with her. Want to thank Mr. Anderson, the story of the footrest. I think we, we can do much better than a footrest, for sure. And, and we do have to take the bull by the horns, although that wasn't the analogy that she used, and, and, and say, and, and give direction to staff about the budget. I think that, that we should, I'd like to recommend that we have two, two scenarios. One is constant yield, the other is constant yields plus perhaps 2%, something like that. To, to, to give us a point of reference and to be able to bring tax, property taxes down to where people can remain in this, in this city that, that are hard-pressed to stay here because of high, high values and high tax rates. I want to thank all of the, all of the other presenters and commenters, Mr. Hubner in Ward Three, for caring about the SNAP, the loss of SNAP benefits. I think that's incredibly important, that we, we look at, see what we can do in, to breach that, 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 that fall off of services. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. Couple of things. Next Wednesday is another meeting of the Transportation Planning Board, and you may all recall from the last time I brought this up, that there's an ongoing debate about whether the Transportation Planning Board at the regional level is going to be focused on traffic, vehicle traffic, or is going to consider some other things as well. So stay tuned on that one. For residents in Ward Two, particularly in Long Branch, Sligo, folks who are, who have been reaching out to me about code enforcement issues, at the next Neighborhood Association meeting, Community Association meeting, Tuesday, March 14th, 7 o'clock, the code manager has agreed to, to come and talk with, with residents about those parts of the code that seem to be most front and center in, in the Long Branch, Sligo neighborhood right now. So that's one local issue. Second local issue, I've been, it's spring, and I've been getting questions about public art, and I'm wondering if the city acting deputy city manager will, I'm going to get ahold of that title, will be able to talk to that tonight or next week about what staff, not, not this second, but will you be talking about it this week or next week?
It's contemplated as a part of the Public Space Management Plan. So my, my preference would be to have the conversation associated with that. But we can talk about some of the public artwork that we have planned for FY24, if council wishes to see that sooner.
Yeah, it would be, it would be my preference to talk about the potential changes that, the, the different options for approving public, neighborhood-based public art sooner rather than later, if only because there is a bunch of residents that would like to hear whether it's possible to do things this year. Were you about to say something?
Yep, I was just going to piggyback off of that point. And just for our acting deputy city manager, this is the issue of residents in the community wanting to leverage public property, like sidewalks, retaining walls, to do art projects. And what is the process that we may be considering in order to allow for something like that? So we can talk offline to think through what would be some, some options that are available, what would be logistically some of the, the policies that would need to be flushed out or put into place, and then the timeline for making something like that, either through a pilot or a citywide policy that would allow for residents who have these ideas to, to work through that process.
So I, so I think it would be good to return to this topic next week and not to bid it to death anymore right now. But it is, it is a concern in, in our neighborhood that's been, as you know, has been going on for some time. So let's touch base about that and, and then see where, where we can go from there. And I apologize, I thought that you had been briefed on this already, but apparently not. And one last thing, which concerns money, well, two. I've been spending a fair amount of time in the last few days on different webinars, tracking different pieces of the climate money that's coming down through the various programs. And I sent, just FYI for council members and the new acting deputy city manager, I sent a note about some of them to this, this afternoon, some of the research that I've done. And then at the end of the week, I'll be doing another one on EPA where I think there's some more possibilities. The first round of all the Department of Energy, transportation monies, all of these things that came down to, no, not, nothing right now. But on the EPA side, there may be a couple opportunities sooner rather than later that align with the programs and, and strategies that we're, that we're talking about doing. So stay tuned. So that was the heads up on that. And last comment, I know I've run over a little bit on the budget for this coming year for fiscal '24. For new council members, the city council has asked, has discussed a few times whether it's possible to get, even at the broader scale, a tiered level budget, two or three different levels, so that we could see what the impacts are of going from current tax rate to constant yield or going up to something else. And we have not really gotten that, and I would love it if we could figure out a way to get that this year, even conceptually. So that's my view on that. Thank you for, for the folks who've brought those issues up.
Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by thanking all the people who have taken time to come out and speak today. I really, really appreciate this kind of feedback. In fact, Ms. Landham, I don't think we've met yet, but I've heard you speak, or I've heard, I've heard about the report that was generated and was really impressed by it and thought it was incredibly important for the city. And I hope that's been somewhat clear from my comments on the dais in the last few months. I am anxious to see what we, as council, can do in talking to my colleagues about next steps, to see how we play a role. We've definitely been dialoguing about it. And, and as you can see, a lot's been going on. But I, it's, nothing could be more urgent, I think, than making our streets safe and making things more equitable across all of, of the parts of the city. And I, and I just, I'm not going to reiterate everything that all my colleagues have said. I concur with the, the majority of the comments that have been made here. I will speak to my Ward Five resident, Karen Elrich. I appreciated the communication we had earlier today. We spoke at length, and I'm very eager to play a role in, in promoting Pollinator Week, among other things, and, and see what role we can play. I would also encourage the group, if possible, to go up to Long Branch for Earth Day, too, if there's a possibility for that, and see how we can spread our wings towards the northern part of our ward where there are also Earth Day celebrations. And I think both of those places are really important for us to spread the word about pollinators and other issues important to the group. And Happy Women's Day to everyone. And then lastly, I, I wanted to just make a plug for better communications across our ward, for sure, on, so on a couple notes. One is on March 13th. Again, I'm going to keep repeating, we have a public safety meeting, hybrid format. I'm very pleased that the police chief and the department is enabling that, 7:00 PM on Monday. I hope folks can come out. And in the, in the vein of promoting communications across our ward and across our city and supporting our city staff in doing so, I, I had some help from the Friends of the Library and others to plant a notice board in my front yard. I know I'm not supposed to say where I live, but Roanoke and Kennebec, there is now a, a notice board that we, I, I am essentially, it's my private property, but it's for the city to use for community purposes. So if you have ideas of things that need to be posted there, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll be figuring out what the city needs to promote and putting it there physically. And I, I got this idea from Ward Six. Talisha Searcy told me she did this in Ward Six, and I'm just showing people what these look like. If you see these around town, got six of these, and please encourage people not to destroy them. We're going to donate them to the city and try to put more communications out to see how far that goes. We're going to test it and see if it works as well as it did in Ward Six to get messages out. And on that note, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Well, good luck. I, I explained to Councilmember Hansak, the best place to put those boxes is actually the worst place, because the best place is the bus stops. And, and children tend to like those things in terms of playing with them, but it is a great way to, to reach a lot of parents who may be taking their kids to the bus stops. But, so I want to thank all of the folks who came out to comment tonight. Karen Elrich, you know, I definitely look forward to participating in some of the pollinator events that are happening. And I always love the Pollinator Group's Fourth of July costumes. It's always just magical what you all are able to do during the Fourth of July parade. Jessica Lindman, thank you so much for, for bringing out your comments again. And as my colleagues have said, this is something that we have been talking about behind the scenes on how we may be able to make some progress in addressing some of the, what we know are some inequitable access issues as it pertains to traffic calming. Mary Jane, I look forward to participating in the next Posna meeting and definitely hear Robert Anderson, Jacqueline Moore, and Paul Hubner regarding aspects of the budget and definitely appreciate your feedback. So I've had a very busy last few days, so I've had to speak a lot. On Saturday, I was able to participate as a panelist on the Young Municipal Leaders Constituent Services 101 Panel. YML is a group that is a part of the Maryland Municipal League and is designed to bring together young municipal leaders across the state. And so, we had a panel to just talk about lessons learned as it relates to constituent services. And there was a lot of really great ideas that were shared, and there's also a lot of shared challenges in terms of making sure that we're able to be as responsive as we can be to community needs. So definitely appreciate Councilmember Gordon's invitation to participate on that, on that panel. On Saturday, I want to thank Small Things Matter and SAT for the Tacoma Park Community Pantry Blue Bin Mini Grand Opening, and that was, is at 6919 Conway. Mark Elrich came out, Lord Charcutian, and it's just so amazing to see how residents in our community are coming up with innovative approaches to address food insecurity in our city. They were able to get new refrigerators using monies from the county. There was lots of food delivery that was happening. So really, really appreciate all of the hard work that the residents in Small Things Matter put into, to make that grand opening a success. On yesterday, that was yesterday, I was also able to sit on a panel during the Represent Women Democracy Solutions Summit that is happening, it's still happening, it was happening over the last three days. I was able to sit in on the Take Action Panel, Advancing Solutions to Ensure Ballot Access, and had an opportunity to just highlight some of the innovative approaches the city of Tacoma Park is using to increase voter access at the local level. So had a chance to just really be a part of a panel of folks that are really some game changers in terms of voter rights and voter access. So really appreciate Represent Women for inviting me to participate on that panel. And today, got a chance to participate in the COG Board of Directors Meeting. So that happened today, yes. And our very own council member Stuart is the, is the chair. So today, we talked a lot, it was actually really interesting, around local examples for implementing equity emphasis areas. And so, we heard from, a presentation from the mayor of Alexandria, the folks from Evan Glass from Montgomery County, was really talking about how they're using equity to do things like develop housing strategies, development strategies, and the like. There was also a, an overview from the Election Officials Committee, and we also had a presentation on Fighting Hate for Good, How to Speak Up Against the Rising Tides of Antisemitism, Hate and Extremism. So it was a really great meeting, wonderful opportunity to hear about some of the great work that's happening in our region and to get some interesting ideas and things we may want to consider here in the city of Tacoma Park. And so, with that, we will move on to city manager comments. And so, with that, I would like to first welcome David Yu-thanks. As our new acting deputy city manager, and this is David's first city council meeting in this role, and so we appreciate David and all of his hard work with getting acclimated to things. And I will turn things over to our acting deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the public. Nice to be with you this evening. Just a few, few updates. The city is moving at a good pace in terms of recruiting. We currently have several key positions posted and are actively hiring for. Just some to, to mention, HR generalists, the community engagement specialists for HCD, policy and data, data analysts, the IT systems administrator, and then recreation also has some seasonal positions that are open for some of their summer camps. So if anybody's interested, please see the city website. Under Human Resources, you'll find Tacoma Park Careers, and all of the job openings are listed there. A couple of notices from the Arts and Humanities Division. There are a few upcoming events to, to note. On March 19th, excuse me, March 9th, at 7:30, there's the Weaving Words Poetry Reading. I won't embarrass myself by trying to say that in Spanish, but there is a Spanish component. The- The, the poetry readers will be reading their poetry in English and Spanish, so the title of this program also has a Spanish title. I just, I'm not capable of saying it without some laughter. The event is meant to, and I quote, transcend borders and unite diverse cultures across political and geographic divides. And if you haven't noticed, on your way into the community center is an exhibit called Open My, excuse me, One Day My Soul Just Opened Up. That is available for view until March 15th. So if you haven't seen it, please stop by. The exhibit features the artwork of four black female artists who explore the spiritual views of African heritage. I want to make a special note, too, and recognize Mr. Rohan Ross. He's a, one of the city's longest tenured staff. He has just retired after 34 years of service and 11 years as sanitation supervisor. So Rohan, the city thanks you for your service and we wish you well. Residents might be glad to know that leaf mulch delivery begins on March 17th. Anyone interested in receiving a delivery can contact Public Works to get on the schedule. Deliveries are scheduled for Fridays of each week. The city delivers three, seven, and 10-yard loads for a fee. For city residents, it's $55 or $75, depending on the quantity. For those outside of the city, the cost is $75 or $115. Deliveries are available until the mulch runs out. And there's also a self-loading option at no charge at Public Works seven days a week. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have no minutes to adopt for tonight, so we're going to move on into our voting session. The first voting item is the Second Reading Ordinance approving installation of traffic calming on Second Avenue. Would someone like to move?
So moved.
In our second.
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments or discussions?
Yes. In, in response to the conversation we had last week, to a couple of the comments today, I'm wondering if, I'd like to suggest an amendment. Should have thought of it last week, but I didn't, to refer back to the, or to the resolution from last October, in which the council identified in general a lot of the recommendations we've received and asked that the staff report back within a certain time about the status of implementing them. And in this council has read it, has seen it, has talked about how it's a good thing, but hasn't necessarily formally endorsed it. So I'd like to propose that I'd like us to consider whether we should just add a line in the results, which are ordained because it's an ordinance. Therefore, be it ordained by the council, Section 1 about the bump itself, Section 2, as outlined in Resolution 202241, the council expects city staff to report back on the status of implementing this resolution later this spring, which is almost literally a quote from the resolution. And so does it, that's a, open for discussion, I guess. That's my, my proposal.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Fulter, I think is next.
I'll, I'll.
Okay. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say, I was just, because I didn't know if I was the second, so I didn't know if I was still like the person talking. I would just say that I would associate myself with your friendly. If it, like.
Yeah.
Sure.
In the, legally speaking, I don't know if it's a problem to put this in an ordinance?
Well, I don't think so, because it's a finding, basically. It would basically be like a finding, so.
Okay. Now, beware as.
Jesse, may I?
I, I just wanted to weigh in on the question of amending it, and of course, that's fine. I just do recommend that you vote it as an amendment, just, vote it separately as an amendment and to add it to the ordinance.
Point of order, I'm sorry. So Jesse, do you mean have the vote in up or down on the speed bump and then the amendment? Or do you mean have the vote on the amendment and then up or down?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that the addition of the statement does not preclude the installation of the speed bump until that action has been taken.
That's not the intent.
Fair point, fair point. Just add the role.
Okay. So, sorry, we're now reading together.
Okay. So, in addition, or something like that. Well, you know, I think, I think it's clear, they're separate.
As outlined, the council expects staff to report back on the status of implementing this resolution.
It says, is it this resolution 2024?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure it should go in the second and not a whereas.
Yeah, it might be better as a whereas. My point being, I'd like it to be in here.
I think it might be cleaner if you make it a whereas. Whereas the city.
That's what I thought she meant, actually.
Yes, it was in a section.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm sure.
So let me try this again. I'd like to add another whereas. Whereas, as outlined in Resolution 2022-41, and yes, I will pass this down to you when I'm generating it. Council expects city staff to report back on the status of implementing this resolution later this spring. In the original resolution, it said six months from October 26th, but we have had a note from the, from Mr. Eubanks about maybe doing it in May, so I'd rather not.
You, but reasonable, appropriate time, obviously. Like legally.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So.
Can you restate it?
Is there a, say it again?
Yeah.
Okay. So whereas, as outlined in Resolution 2022-41, the city council expects city staff to report back on the status of implementing this resolution at an appropriate time later this spring.
Mm-hmm.
I would second that. I'd second that.
Okay. So that would be an amendment that we would need to vote on. So city clerk, would you need a roll call, or can we just do an up and down? Okay.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. We're voting to add the amendment, or we're voting on the whole thing?
We're voting to add the amendment, which is a whereas clause.
Okay.
That will recommit staff to providing us with an update regarding the status.
And then after we're done adding the amendment, then we're going to go to the vote.
Then we will vote on the whole thing.
Great.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the amendment adding the whereas clause, as Councilmember Dibala just outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I had a question. Can I, is it, when can I ask that question?
Technically, that was, like, technically, you would have had it then, so like, I'll.
I would withdraw my vote, so as if you could ask your question.
Do I say point of orders or something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, pardon me, I'm not that good at this yet. I was hoping I could ask a question before we did the vote. Is that possible?
Okay.
It's a question of Eubanks? I'm sorry, I was trying to catch your eye, but I didn't, it didn't work.
Okay, sorry. All right. So, so it would be helpful, while we're talking about this amendment, if you don't have a question regarding the amendment, to please take off your light. Thank you. Okay. Now I see you.
Thank you. So next time, I should say point of order, right before you get to that vote, just say it. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Eubanks, I wonder if you could just clarify, I heard my colleague, Dibala, say that, that you, if I understood correctly, were ready to present a report like that on behalf of the city in May, possibly? Could you speak to that quickly, just about the timing and whether there's any chance of it coming sooner? If you'd like it to be this flexible. And I'm not trying to put pressure on you, but I think our city has been waiting a long time for this, and, and I know it's your very first day doing this, but I would appreciate if you could share your thoughts on that with the residents of Tacoma Park who are anxious to hear what the delays might entail. Thanks.
Sure. I think our last update on the topic was October of last year.
Right.
And I believe.
Right before the resolution.
Right, right. And the resolution, if I recall, I don't remember the language exactly, but I believe it commits city staff to reporting quarterly. If that's true, this would be about the time when we would be presenting updates. Like many of the challenges upon us, there is a capacity concern. As you know, there's been some movement within HCD, specifically the, excuse me, the Planning Manager. And so that division has been a division of one. And so the progress that we expected to make between October and now has not progressed quite as quickly. And so we believe that we'll be more prepared to give a presentation to council in about May.
I appreciate that, and I hope that residents appreciate it. You had a chance to speak on behalf of city staff. I don't think people always understand the constraints that you guys have been under, particularly being short-staffed. So thank you.
And just a point about the actual resolution, which I opened so I could see it. It says that the city staff would report back for the first time in six months, not three months. So that would be about now, as you said. Give a little headroom for what you just said, makes it, makes it later this spring, makes it May. That was my thinking.
Councilmember Fulter, do you have a question regarding?
I, I just, like, I do appreciate, like, what you're trying to do with the amendment, but as far as I'm concerned, the previous resolution already sets that expectation. And so, like, it, it doesn't really change how I feel about.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing. Do we have any other questions about this whereas? Okay, Councilmember Dibala, if you would.
I would call the question.
Just to, to make sure everybody's on the same page. We are adding a whereas. If you could just read that language.
Sure. Whereas, as outlined in Resolution 202241, the city council expects city staff to report back on the status of implementing this resolution at an appropriate time later this spring.
Okay. Now we're going to vote. Councilmember Small, do you have a question?
Oh, my.
All right.
I turned it on, so I didn't know if you had to hear the, that, that was just me being technically.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment with the whereas, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? Okay. So we voted in favor of the amendment. Now, we're going to vote on the actual ordinance. So this is a second reading ordinance. Council, city clerk, do we need to do a roll call for this one? Okay. So would the city clerk, please, call the roll?
Councilmember Fulter?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
See, abstain.
Mayor Circe?
Aye. Okay, so we got through that one.
Which is not to say I don't think they should have theirs, people.
All right. So now, we are going to talk through, vote on the first reading ordinance of Budget Amendment Number Five. And so there were some adjustments that were made. Based on the, some, some of the feedback that was provided, I just want to turn things over to Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks to see if there's anything in particular that we need to be aware of regarding any changes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to call council's attention to page three of the, the ordinance. You'll see under General Fund Transfers, city staff have added a, a transfer from Recreation and Human Resources to Public Works, $21,000 from HR and $9,000 from Recreation. The, the purpose is to allow Public Works to purchase a long-overdue work order management system. Right now, Public Works is, is using a very antiquated system that includes the transmission of work orders from staff and residents via text message, email, verbally, in a format that most agencies of our Public Works size no longer do. There are inherent inefficiencies in that process. The process also prevents the Public Works Department from doing any kind of data analysis or evaluation of the work orders that they receive. And I think this council in particular is very interested in ensuring that the decisions that we make are decisions that are data-informed. And so a part of this request is ensuring that Public Works has the ability to do that moving forward. There are two, two things to, to note. The, the purchase of the system is about $26,000. That includes the purchase and implementation. There is an ongoing fee for that software. The ongoing fee is about $26,000 as well. Because of the importance of this system, Public Works has found a way to offset that cost ongoing. It is that important, and so luckily, the, the operation, operational effect of that cost is not significant, and certainly does not outweigh the benefit of this, the system itself. In terms of the process by which Public Works decided to, they've already identified a system. The process for identifying that system was pretty extensive. They reviewed 11 different potential programs. They selected three to do a demo. So we tested the systems in the field. All of Public Works got a chance to opine and, and provide feedback. And so it did come down to both a matter of best use and cost. At the time of the evaluation, which was 2021, the system that we would like to move forward with was actually the cheapest. Now, things have changed since then. That is now the, there were two systems that were kind of the front runners. The other system seems to be cheaper, we don't know, because we haven't gone back and got that system repriced. It wasn't necessary, because it clearly wasn't the system to use. The cost difference, though, if you use the new number from the system that we would like to proceed with and compare that to the system that we would not like to use, the cost difference is about $7,000 in operating. The, the cost for implementation for the other system is much, much higher. So I just want to make council aware of that. Staff feels that this is a critical purchase, and we are very excited to be able to do it.
Real quick question. So in terms of the, the accounts that the funds are transferred from, so like, for example, the Recreation Department, $9,000, and that looks like youth success account, what are some of the impacts of these particular lines, accounts losing these funds?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. So for Rec in particular, the, the excess funds were a result of two career staff leaving, the teen manager, excuse me, teen program manager and the recreation manager. In the time during the, the vacancy, there would have been programs operating in that person's, in those persons' absence. Several programs didn't proceed, and there's not a circumstance where we can make up the programming during that time. So those are just excess fees that we can transfer other places.
And then the HR line item?
Yeah, that's just simply contract dollars that we won't make use of.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I think this is important, I think it's needed. I remember talking about this before, and just confirming, so I thought that, that the council had budgeted, budgeted some money for this in a previous year, and did that then get called back because it didn't get spent?
No, it was.
Or is this in addition to that money because, you know, inflation?
The last two years, there have been staff freezes as well as.
Right, so staffing.
Budget reductions. And so the inability of Public Works to move forward with that is a. And so the inability of Public Works to move forward with that is a result of the, those processes.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. Manager, Acting Manager Eubanks. I know I had sent you a message about this, but I just wanted to clarify. I really appreciate you elaborating on the estimates, that you got 11 estimates. That was helpful information to me. I have no question that this is a really critical system for the city to obtain. My main concern at this stage would be the ongoing costs and making sure we've really, you know, honed in on the most cost-efficient and effective system for the city to use, you know, for probably the next 10 to 10-plus years. And particularly in light of the fact that we've had some budget concerns, if not more than that. And so I just want to make sure I understand correctly. You said you narrowed it initially on the most cost-efficient of the 11, but you also said there were two, and it sounded like maybe it was pre-pandemic or at least a few years ago when you got those last estimates. Have you guys had a chance to go back and double-check on those, at least the top two or three? Is that something that you plan to do still, even if we approve this? Can you, again, elaborate on that? And I wasn't sure I understood when you said the cost difference in the operating cost is 7,000. Is that the more expensive system is 7,000 more per year or less per year than the one we were going to select?
So, just a point of clarification. We evaluated 11 systems. We got pricing for four. The evaluation process ruled out the others. For the remaining groups, we tried, both in the office and in the field, the system. One was head and shoulders above the others. And so the cost difference now, one using the old price of the system that we do not want to proceed with and the new price for the system that we do want to proceed with, the cost difference is about $7,000. That's the ongoing cost. We have not gone back to reprice, price the system that we don't want to use because the system we do want to use is that much better. I don't want to speak on behalf of Public Works, but I don't believe there's any interest in using any other system.
Okay, my apologies. I must have misunderstood. I thought you said there were two systems that were fairly comparable and that the operational costs of the one were cheaper than the other. I must have misunderstood.
There were two finalists. But once we actually did the trial, one was much more user-friendly and met the needs and demands of Public Works in a much more efficient and generally better way.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think those running costs are just really, those become then our bottom-line costs for, you know, a long time forward, so, thank you.
And just another point of clarification. That was also a concern of mine. And so one of the requests from Public Works is that they offset that cost. And so they found $26,000 in their operating budget to reduce, to allow for the implementation and ongoing cost of the software.
Do you mean long-term? Like, it's like a HR possibly or something else that would be a fixed cost that they would not have to do each year moving forward?
Right, right. The point was to find $26,000 that they can cut from their operating budget from FY24 on, and they were able to accomplish that.
Fantastic, fantastic. One would expect increases in human efficiency. Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Acting City Manager, or Acting Deputy Eubanks, you'll allow me, I'd like to have a little bit of a colloquy with you on some of these issues. The first question that I had about the manner in which you have arrived at that decision is, is that based on my understanding of what you said, this is consistent with the purchasing ordinance or code in Tacoma Park, right?
Yes. This is a purchase that is, if I understand you correctly, Councilman.
The manner in which you select, like, it does say in there narrowing into the.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We got at least three bids, and we did our due diligence.
Thank you. My next question to you would be, when talking about the last three or the three that are issue, given Councilmember Hansak's question, just for my own edification, can you tell me what the names of those are?
Sure, one was Cartograph. One was City Works. The other was Dude Solutions.
Okay, which one did you choose?
Cartograph.
Okay. I would just say, as part of this colloquy, that from personal, previous professional experience, that that one is good. My next question to you would be related to the pricing. And was the pricing schedule that you guys were offered related to the size of the town, tax structure of the town? Or was it based on some other rubric?
So, what changed was the way in which the software that we would like to purchase would change is the way that they price. So originally, they priced by module. They now price based on unlimited users and then no other options other than unlimited users. And so because of that, the price has gone up.
Okay. And so I would like to note for your edification or anybody else's that among the different kinds of pricing structures that you would have for a system like this, an unlimited-use system where you have a large Public Works Department with a lot of different sorts of different operating parts that integrate in a variety of ways, particularly with regard to sustainability, resilience, or long-term things, that, that's a pretty good thing. With regard to the long-term costs versus the soft costs and the hard costs, like the hard 26 that you have to do to put it in versus the long-term cost, did they give you a lock-in with regard to that? Or do they expect that that is going to be fluctuating with regard to any number of things in the actual proposed contract?
That I don't know. I haven't, I don't recall the contract enough to know if there's any escalation.
Okay. I would just note that for your interest, so they don't okie-dokie. Because even if you get the approval, you are the person that has the opportunity to play hardball against the wall of at least one unreasonable person who has done your job before. And so you can tell them that there's a crazy guy. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other? Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I wasn't sure I would chat or say anything because I certainly wanted to follow up on Councilmember Hansak's point in terms of operating costs and your clarification that the operating costs will be met not only this year but in the future. And could you explain it again to me how we can, how that happens? I just, I didn't quite follow how we can, going forward, have offset those costs. Is it savings of time, staff time, or how does that work? Could you explain it?
Sure. The cost savings that I referenced are future cost savings. So there's, of course, nothing we can do about FY23. But FY24, when we look at that budget, because we're in the budget process, we can identify costs now that we can reduce to save space, essentially, for $26,000 in additional costs elsewhere. So you may move it from one operating line to the software line. That $26,000, you essentially move it from one place to another. To answer your question about the longevity of it, there's no way that we can guarantee, right, that in FY25 that there will not be a cost increase in, within Public Works that is greater than $25,000. That's because of any number of reasons that costs go up. My point is that the operating costs that we have reduced, it's feasible that the cost reductions can be maintained and provide the same service level. And so, I'm not sure how else to describe it. You can maintain the same level of operating that we've reduced from the existing budget. You can maintain that level of operations moving forward.
Okay. So I guess, just to be clear, then, there's a shift. You'll be able to determine some places to shift funds out of the Public Works budget in future years, but you're not certain that there will always be that amount to shift or to help offset this operating cost? There's no certainty in that. There's an expectation.
There's an expectation, yeah. And to be quite honest, the way you're asking a question is very hard to answer in that way. I can answer it in terms of FY24. In FY24, we found ways to reduce by $26,000 expenses within Public Works that will allow us to proceed with the $26,000 purchase of the software.
Thank you. The point overall is that, you know, we want to, we don't want to increase our fixed costs. And this is a fixed cost of 26,000 that comes out of somewhere. So I appreciate that it's needed. I appreciate that you did due diligence to find the right software and that we'll use it and we'll come up with the funds to pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, just, maybe when I stepped out, someone else already asked this. It's my assumption that if we're implementing a system like this, there's going to be staff efficiencies in their time which will allow them to do something else besides fuss around with notes, pieces of paper and notes and phone messages and all, you know, all the things that are going on now in terms of trying to respond to individual requests and keep track of them in total, that this will free up staff time, if you will. And so I don't, that's not what you're counting for, the money that you're trying to attract. The operational funds that you mentioned earlier, that's not staff time. But there's also that quote, savings in staff time.
No, it's not savings in staff time. This is, these are operational dollars.
Right. But there's also the efficiencies of the staff time. That was my question.
Yes, yes. We can assume that there'll be some efficiencies in staff time.
Thank you.
Okay. So, would someone like to move? Do I have a second? Okay. And given that this is a second reading ordinance? Oh. Are you sure? Okay. Given that this is a second reading ordinance of the, it's not? Okay. Oh, it's first. I'm sorry, I was still looking at the first item. So this is a first reading ordinance approving the Budget Amendment Number Five. Look to the City Clerk. Do we need to call a roll or do we do hands up, hands down? Okay. All those in favor of approving the first reading ordinance approving FY23 Budget Amendment Number Five? Please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain?
I abstain, please.
Okay. And so we will have a second reading on this one, correct? So this will come back to us next week. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute for those people who've been paying attention to this discussion, either here or at home, that Mr. Eubanks was the Director of Housing and Community Development up until Friday. And Monday, he started this job as the Acting City Manager. And I think that I've been, personally, I've been impressed with the level of knowledge that he has in discussing the items tonight up to this point. And I think you need to be complimented. And I appreciate the work you've obviously put in in three days on the job. Really impressed, as I say. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Councilmember Hansak?
Apologies, I forgot to turn my light on.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I was just wondering, I guess part of the reason why I was, whether this is the opportunity, or that's passed until the next week, to ask some questions about the larger budget issues that are contained in these documents. So it's a question, you know, can I ask some more questions about this budget? Not this item, the software item. That's not what I wanted to focus on.
Councilmember Gibson, can you be specific on which budget you're, you have questions regarding? Is it the 2023 or the 2024?
2023. Going in what is leading to 2024. In other words, there's certain, I want to connect the dots between 2023 projections onto 2024.
Okay. So I think for the purpose of tonight's meeting, if your questions are pertaining to how this budget amendment has implications for perhaps the 2024 budget, I think those are fair game. It seems pretty clear that the budget amendment that we just passed was for actual cost savings in the amount of $227,078. And those amounts will be per the budget amendment going into the general fund?
That's, if I might, so my question has less to do with this specific amendment, but its implications for our position as we go into the next budget cycle. For example, would it be correct to say that the final budget, as presented, has a revenue shortfall of $9,302, $260,000, but that it will be reduced by $5 million draw on the library bond fund? So I wanted some clarification about connecting that.
So it would be helpful, given that the Finance Director is not in attendance tonight, that if you have specific questions regarding the items that are on page, the last couple of pages, in terms of the funding sources, if you could submit those questions to Acting Deputy City Manager and the Finance Director, Susan Chung, and then she can provide you with specific responses in writing?
I'd like the answers, though, to be public. So I did expect that, I was hoping that she would be here that I could ask her. I understand that Mr. Eubanks may not be the person. So how do I get questions raised about the, connecting the dots between this budget and those documents that talk about the rest of the year? Where can I get those, when can I make those questions and get those answers for the public?
Sure. You can send those questions to Director Chung. You will have an opportunity. This will come back to us for a vote next week.
Yes.
You're more than welcome to make what you learned from Director Chung public during that time. We can also talk to Acting Director, Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks about making sure that the Finance Director will be available at our next meeting, which she should be, because I believe we're talking about the forecast.
All right, yes, absolutely. Well, I will look forward to following up on that.
Or is it the next week? Sorry. I'm mixing my weeks up. But we can, we can talk offline, yep, in two weeks. But for next week, we're going to be voting on this. So if we need to have her here, we can make sure that that's, that happens.
I look forward to that.
But it would be helpful, if you have specific questions, to send those to her so that she can be prepared to provide you with any.
Right. In the past, I mean, there were many, many, many questions asked of her the last couple of times that she's made presentations without advance notice. So I thought I might be able to do the same here. But I'm happy to get them in advance as well as ask them in the council. Again, as I said, we've had two or three discussions with the previous City Manager and Finance Director Chung with serious, deep questions that were asked and back and forth, and I hope to do that again.
Yeah. And I also would suggest, and this is for all of my colleagues, it's often helpful to send your questions in writing so that you can get a response in writing so that when you are providing any written communications to residents, you can draw from those written responses. It's sometimes difficult for residents to follow all of this back and forth, and it can often be a little easier if you have those written responses to be able to share more broadly. Okay, awesome. All right. So, our last voting item. We are voting on a resolution approving, yes, approving, authorizing temporary closure of city streets in support of the 2023 Annual Event Council. in support of the 2023 annual event calendar. Deputy, Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks, has there been any modifications to this resolution?
Yes. You'll notice that as a part of the memo per the request of Councilman Gibson, we've added some detail to the environmental considerations. And there's also been a change to the date of the, the second traffic count from 415 to 429. And this was to account for the public school spring break on the DC side. Those are the only changes.
Great. Thank you. So do I have someone that would like to move this resolution? You have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Filcher?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Gibson?
Agreed.
Okay. All right. So all those, and we're doing a single, this is an ordinance, so we're just going to do?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, gosh. Okay. All right. So all those in favor of approving the resolution for the 2023 temporary street closure? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. So looking at the time and trying to stay true to my promise of giving folks a little bit of a break once we hit nine o'clock, we will reconvene in 10 minutes. All right. Thank you all for, for joining us post-break. That has become a little bit of a tradition for this new council, making sure everyone gets an opportunity to stretch their legs for a few minutes as we start the second wave of the meeting. So the next and the final item on our agenda is to talk about council priorities. And so I would like to facilitate this portion of the meeting more in a conversational way. Colleagues have provided information and edits and language around. Colleagues have provided information and edits and language around and follow-up from our retreat, which happened on January 20th, where we talked in-depth about the current city council priorities and where we may want to make some changes. Council members have provided actual edits to things. And so what I'm hoping we'll be able to do is to kind of talk at a higher level and to reach a little bit of consensus based on what we've seen and what we've discussed on the 20th, what I've seen in terms of some of the comments provided, so that we can move towards actually having a more finalized list of priorities. And given the nature of some of the edits and some of the feedback that I've received, I think it may be more helpful for us to kind of talk about this in a more open way, just to ensure that we're able to hear each other's perspectives so that we can make sure that we're adequately accounting for all of the council members' views. So what I would like to do is for us to take each of the priorities one by one. And I will just give folks a brief summary in terms of what the original priority was designed to do, what was discussed during our retreat, and then what I was seeing a bit in the markup, just so that I can get a better understanding of kind of the direction we want to go. So the first priority from the 2021 six resolution adopted by the prior council was mitigating the impact of COVID-19 on the community and city operations. That included reopening city functions using a phased approach to ensure safe and deliberate return to normal operations, ensuring residents have access to the emergency assistance they need to recover from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and to support our small businesses in weathering the economic downturn due to the pandemic so that they can recover and thrive in the future. During our retreat, it was mentioned that there was a desire to focus more on some of the longer-term recovery efforts that we see in our community, and making sure that we're able to not only help people during the throes of the public health crisis, but to really try to address some of these more systemic issues that we've seen as a result of the pandemic. In review of the comments or the edits that were provided, I do have one discussion question, because it seems as if there is a desire overall goal for us to move the COVID-19 priority to broaden it out a little bit so that it's not just about mitigating the impact of COVID-19, but other types of catastrophic events or disasters. And so it would be helpful to hear from colleagues around whether or not this priority should have a focus on COVID-19 specifically, or if there is a desire to have the priority be a little broader. In reading through some of the edits that folks provided, what came to mind for me was building community resilience. And so basically, making sure that our city, our residents, our businesses are able to weather various types of disasters, which could be a pandemic, it could be some sort of weather-related event, it could be a fire, but it could be something that could be really detrimental and making sure that our residents have, and our city staff, as well as our businesses, have the resources necessary to be able to rebound from those kinds of events. So it would be helpful for those that provided feedback to just kind of talk a little bit about what you were envisioning in terms of some of the edits that were provided. Councilmember Gibson?
I'm sorry, I was not one of those that provided edits or comments. It struck me that this effort to broaden it, really broadened it into a social safety net. And that's asking a lot, so I'm just kind of cautious about our broadening it beyond where it was intended. The most obvious expansion of dealing with COVID-19 would be public health. I could see that as sort of a more narrower, a narrower way to broaden this COVID-19. But I guess I caution about trying to create a social and economic safety net for businesses, the operations, and residents.
Okay. I shared, Councilmember Gibson, I initially shared your concern as well. I mean, I could imagine, because again, thinking about feasibility, what's the appropriate city role, I could imagine our goal in terms of building resilience from the perspective of addressing lessons learned that we saw during the pandemic, working to really make sure that we have those emergency assistance, either programs or access, and making sure that we're lobbying in the county and others to make sure that those social service providers, we have that network in place so that when people are experiencing things like an apartment fire, which can be very, you know, completely transform someone's life, that we have a place to direct them to and kind of help with that coordination. But I too am concerned about making this perhaps a little too big for our city. And so I'm really trying to think through what is a more appropriate scope. Again, I think that lessons learned from the pandemic was really helpful in terms of how can we leverage new efficiencies that we identified during the pandemic? You know, what are our HR policies that we may be able to keep based on lessons learned? Telework and those kinds of flexibilities, which are often, I know, in my other life is a big deal right now, especially if you're dealing with things like recruitment and retention. And, you know, how are we making sure that what we saw during the pandemic, that we're able to respond faster in terms of our abilities to establish different kinds of funds, contracting mechanisms that allow us, and improving those types of efficiencies that would allow us to get monies to people in need perhaps a little faster? Maybe we could streamline that. But in terms of economic combating the impact of inflation, that's something that may be a little challenging. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, I think I may have been the person who proposed not having COVID-related as a goal, as a separate goal priority overall anymore, and instead having it as a goal under a couple of the others and focusing on the recovery, the lessons learned, and the fiscal management with the ARPA money. So I could see keeping it as a standalone if people feel that way, but I also have got a lot of concerns about the city taking on a social service role broader than, broader and more permanent than the one we've been taking on temporarily during the pandemic.
Councilmember Honsak?
I think it's fair to say that I made a number of the proposed changes on this one. And I'm sitting here thinking, I think I need to do some more thinking on it. To me, I think that the, my initial response is I feel that we need something that is separate here in terms of the prioritization and an acknowledgement of the fact that we are not anywhere near back to something that people would recognize as normal. And to me, it was too limited to say that right now the vast majority of what we're seeing is COVID-19 related because we have a war, one of the most significant wars that I've seen in my lifetime that is disrupting logistics chains, inflation, and all of those things are sort of feedback loops that are creating local situations that are really, really difficult. And so I'm not, I did not mean to make edits here that would be perceived as really broad, building community resilience. That's enormous, and that belongs in other places to me. Nor did I think that any of these edits, and I'm willing to revisit all of that, but we're intended to look at just social services. I don't think that's the role of city is to be, you know, we need to look to other forms of government for that. But I did think that some of that language needs to be acknowledged. And just for example, the city has and does play a very big role right now, or maybe should do more, in, you know, childcare, for example, and recreation. To say that that's purely pandemic-related is just not right. And so I think it's just important that we're couching these in terms of sort of the longer-term resilience. And I believe that, to be clear, I think we have a different priority where we're going to talk about disaster and climate-related resilience issues, which are as different from any of these things. And I think that's very important for that to be specific and focused, just as I think this one needs to be specific and focused and not overbroad. But if you'll allow me to, myself, on some of the edits I've suggested, to give that more thought, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think two things that were brought up. One, about how some of these activities would actually overlap with some of the other priorities. So one of the things that, because I think I was with Councilmember DeBala about, okay, so if we're talking about addressing some of the lasting impacts of COVID, then we're talking about people who, what we saw the most during the height of the pandemic was individuals who were, in essence, for the most part, living paycheck to paycheck. And so once those monies got cut, then rents were not able to be paid, food was not able to be purchased, all of that stuff. So is the point for COVID for us right now is leveraging, how are we leveraging the COVID dollars to make sure we're meeting those needs? And then is the actual work something that is covered under our Community for All, right? Which is, like, the COVID money is the mechanism in which we are getting the funding necessary to address many of those challenges. And so is it a priority in and of itself? Or is it, hey, some of our priorities under a livable community for all include things like housing, sustainability, there's food insecurity, we have programming to meet the needs of youth and seniors? So we may be able to take a bit of a crosswalk between what are some of these longstanding impacts of COVID that we want to make sure that we address, and then make them strategies or clarifying the goals under the Livable Community for All? May be an option. Unless we're actually talking about people being more prepared for something like this to happen in the future, I'm wondering if that might be a good fix.
I think that might be, you know, one of the things that, in my budgeting experience with making plans like this one is sort of aiming to be, it's a lot less specific than what I work with in my day job, if you will. But I also think it may be, and I would be interested in the staff perspective on this, that it may be useful to put some of these things in priority number one because I feel that our ARPA dollars should be utilized for some of these specific things that are still related to the pandemic and still related to structural issues that have occurred, whereas priority number two is something that we do all the time as a city, hopefully, to some degree. And therefore, it might allow us to more clearly elucidate why we are, you know, say, sort of, these ARPA dollars are going towards these kinds of things that fall under priority number one, and that's why. Because, you know, we're topping up our recreation programs by X dollars, and those X dollars are sort of part of priority one. I mean, that would be a reason, for example, that it would more clearly belong, in my mind, in priority one. But I don't need to belabor that point. That's part of what I'm thinking about when I put that language under number one.
Okay. So, no, go ahead, Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, just, I guess, and that's, this is an observation, and it's not just here, it's across the country. I think it's difficult to isolate just exactly what the impacts of COVID were different from what COVID did to highlight existing structural and economic and health issues broadly. So I'm not sure, that line is hard to draw. I mean, people were, many people in our town were having a hard time making, paying their bills beforehand. A lot more of them were affected with COVID. But the issue of food insecurity, of job insecurity existed, and it continues to exist. So I'm just, I'm just kind of saying, I find it hard to draw the line between what was specifically an impact of COVID and what was heightened or exaggerated and identified during the COVID pandemic emergency. If that makes sense.
No, it does, and I say all the time, you know, COVID simply exacerbated inequalities that are inequities that already existed. So it basically just brought them all to light. And so when we developed the COVID priority previously, it was around what do we need to do to respond quickly to this public health crisis, which involved making modifications to how our city staff and could be, have people here in person? Like, what would be some of those logistical things that we needed to address just because of the nature of the pandemic? But if it is aspects of, like, for example, one of our prior goals was ensure residents have access to emergency assistance they need. Well, that quite frankly is something we do all the time. We provide rental assistance, we do that quite often. What the COVID dollars did was gave us more resources to do that. And also, you know, aspects of the business support. But we also spent money as it related to actually educating folks around health-related matters. So doing vaccine, COVID testing, vaccine clinics, those kinds of things, signage for businesses. And those were all direct priorities. Those priorities were directly tied to responding to the pandemic. So I think that, because I want to make sure that we're able to move the priorities in a way that we can end up next week with a more fleshed-out draft document that perhaps we can post for residents to see. I would encourage us to think about priority one through the lens, or the former mitigate the impact of COVID, from the perspective of what is there that's left to be done? And if it is related to sustaining people in our community, then thinking about it from the perspective of, do we have those sustaining aspects in other sections of the document? So, and would it make more sense for us to flesh out, revise those goals to make them really address the root issue that came to light during COVID? If that makes sense. Oh, I'm seeing lights go off. Okay, you can go.
Okay. Are you looking for a couple of volunteers on this section? Or are you gonna look later for volunteers on this section? Because I thought I heard Councilmember- Because I thought I heard Councilmember Hansak say that she would be willing to take a crack at rewriting if she had help, but maybe I didn't.
Well, no, I mean, I'd like to still reflect on a little bit more with a little time. But I, I mean, I, I would welcome anybody else's thoughts on just, just what I put forward here. I mean, I, I hear you. I think COVID aggravated existing inequalities and all sorts of other structural factors. However, I don't think that's all that we're seeing here. When we see that huge percentages of children are suddenly falling behind in massive, massive ways from where they were before the pandemic, we are now talking about fixing that piece of things as much as possible with a certain, and hopefully, it's attached to a dollar amount that we can invest in. I mean, I mean, it's not just dollars, right? But, but I mean, we, we are going to, we and all sorts of other levels of government and others are investing in that specifically. And it's not sustainable forever to do that, certainly not as a city, because we're talking about massive investment. And we are fortunate that we have the ARPA dollars right now to do that. But I think that we, it would be helpful. I mean, I don't want to just repeat myself, but I do think it would be very helpful for us to kind of separate that effort, that sort of, we want to try to catch up and, and build the resilience in a different way and deepen our ARPA dollars to resilience and not just quick recovery things. So over the course of the next two years, which is what we're focused on here, over two years, what can we achieve as different from normal times? And therefore, should it be something separate? And, and I'll stop there. And that's, I mean, that's still in my thinking and how we do that, I don't know. But I, I think it would be a bit weird to have that same thinking fall under Number Two. But I, but I'm willing to give that some more thought, so.
So, so one thought, because I want us to make sure we're able to get to the other priorities. And just something for you to noodle over, because what you kind of described is, where, where are the lessons learned from COVID? And whether or not we need to come up with new solutions for when the ARPA dollars are over, right? So what did we learn over the course of responding to the pandemic? What did we learn over the course of the different programs and initiatives? And do we need to do things different going forward in order to address those gaps? Because you brought up childcare, tutoring. We increased the amount of funds that we went to, that is going to recreation programs as part of the COVID package of, of programs. So if, if the idea is, how do we make sure that we're making it a priority to learn from what we did as a result of the pandemic to address some of these longstanding issues? Then that could be the angle. So happy to work with you offline where we can kind of talk through kind of what that might look like. It would, it would be a lot tighter than what we have here, but it would probably be a little cleaner and make it seem a little different from what is in some of the, the languages in some of the other priorities. Okay, so, and because we were talking about the Livable Community for All, that's the next one. All right. So the, the overall idea of the Livable Community for All priority, and it sounded as if folks were open to us keeping this priority. The original was designed to really try to capture all of the things that we think are important to make sure that everyone in the city enjoys living here and has access to the things that they need to be successful in, in, in the community. And so the original items were ensure a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, and stable housing options are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the community. Identify the need to explore the development of programs to address food insecurity in the community. Identify programming needs in the community and develop approaches to meet those needs. Emphasizing youth, families, seniors, and residents who tend to face barriers to opportunities such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, those with unsustainable, lower-paying jobs, immigrants, and people with developmental disabilities. Defend our status as a sanctuary city and maintain our commitment to being a welcoming and inclusive community. For all residents, improve transportation planning and outreach to create a safer and more racially equitable community for all residents, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicle occupants. And then further the city's race equity work. So one of the things that I noticed for this one was during our, during our retreat, we had talked about particularly moving the items related to housing creation to the Economic Development Section. So items related to building partnerships and others to expand affordable housing options in the city. Explore the needs of and create programs to assist common ownership communities. So are folks amendable to making sure that we're including the aspects that are related to the implementation of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan? That those elements are included in the, in the Community Development Section? Yes? Okay.
What, what goal and strategy are you referring to?
Yep, I can do that. It's, it's number, yes, so it would go to number six. But the goal that this falls under is ensure a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, green, and energy, well, I'm including your edits. Green and energy efficient and stable housing options are more, are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the community. And so one of the things that we had talked about during the retreat was making sure that aspects that relates to the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan work actually fell under our Community Development, the Community Development for an Improved and Equitable Quality of Life item. So if folks are okay with that, I'll, I'll play around with that one and move that item over. And so then that kind of gets us back to.
Sorry, I just, just wanted to say that, like, my concern was, it doesn't say anything about, like, adding housing. And I just want it to be really clear that we're not converting housing that already exists into affordable housing, that we need to add housing.
Or do both.
Or do both.
So that would mean tweaking the goal? Or developing a new one for this one, and it would be under the Community Development? Yeah, it actually could fall under because the goal for the Community Development is plan and prepare for development while maintaining strong environment, blah, 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 blah. So we could tweak that goal a little bit to make sure that it's clear that we're talking about development of housing and.
So some of these are, are not development per se. And so it might be that when it gets, if it gets moved, when and if it gets moved, it, it, some of those, some of these specifics might need to come back. But I think overall, it works better in another place. We also talked about moving transportation, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth goal perhaps to development. With, jumping ahead for a moment, what are your thoughts on that? Do you think it makes more sense to move housing?
I think it makes sense to move housing. I want to make transportation its own priority. I mean, um.
If you get it out from under the, all this other stuff, it stands up pretty well already.
It would stand out well.
Either, either way.
So, I mean, I think that it makes more sense being under the development, Community Development piece than where it is now in the Livable Community for All. I think that, one question for the group is, when we're talking about transportation, what is it we want to make sure that we're able to accomplish as it pertains to aspects of transportation over the next two years? And what are we asking for staff to actually do? If it is, like, yes, there's an increased attention that needs to happen on, you know, our policies and procedures regarding traffic calming. We got purple line stuff. We have lots of sidewalk-related issues. We have pedestrian and vehicular safety-related matters related to state highways and our local streets. But, you know, it's important, but really focusing on what is it that we're looking to make sure that we're able to do over the next two years, I think is going to be important as well.
I think that making transportation its own item makes a lot of sense. Not only because those are a lot of my priorities, but also if we look at what's going on, on the county and state level, it's a good time for us to act on those things. And so just, you know, we're signaling to the city staff, like, what are, what the budget should look like, right, through our priorities? And so it's a good time where we can really, with help from the state and county, maximize our efforts in that arena.
I'm, I'm looking at what's, what's left. And it, what's left is programming, Sanctuary City, equity, and equity. And what, what do all three of those have in, in, in common? I'm not sure. I mean, livable communities is, is abroad that everything should be in here. You know, environment as well as housing, et cetera. So I think we, if we just leave it with the three there, Sanctuary City. It's kind of, it's cultural. It's, it's an accepting culture, an accepting and equitable culture. Anyhow, I think that, that looking at what's left, we might want to revise even the name of the priority. And, and consider other.
I might have a suggestion for naming it, and I don't know. Councilmember Fulcher, please, give some thoughts on this. We, we, you will notice that Councilmember Fulcher and I put in some language around belonging. But a Belonging Community for All might be some language that we, we could talk about. We have next session too, and we can talk a little bit more. We were recently at a seminar talking, and I mentioned this briefly, I think she did too, about the racial healing seminar we went to and had a really fantastic inspirational speaker who came from Berkeley, from the Belonging Institute, and talked to us kind of about Equity 3.0. And I don't, I don't want to get into this too much, but the concept being centering around belonging versus just focusing on equity and structural factors. And I think it's a, it's a nice framing, for starters, for kind of what we're working towards as a community with the Sanctuary City, with the cultural, with the housing, and working a little bit more towards that, conceptually would be a good framing for this, I think, maybe. Number two. Something to consider.
I've also never really loved the word livable. It doesn't sound great. Like, eh, it's livable.
I like belonging.
Yeah, speaks towards, you know, issue, issues around structural, racial inequities and things that this community specifically has tried really hard to do, and it, and it's really hard to do.
I just took a look at five, which is engaged, responsive, service-oriented government. No, that, that's not quite what I meant. When I, when I was thinking about engaged, I was thinking about engaged residents with, and, and a, and a community that is welcoming for all. So maybe, maybe there is something to that. But I do, I think I agree with Councilmember Gibson that raising transportation up to its own priority might actually do it a disservice. I think it would do better as a very clear goal under one of these big buckets. It would be much easier to articulate what the opportunity, I like this idea that we have the opportunity for the two years, and this is an issue right now we can make some progress on. And, and if we float it up, then it gets a little even more squishy. I kind of like saying very clearly, what are the things in these two years?
And I think, for, for me, I also want us to kind of be able to think a little bit more around, what are some of the other things we want to make sure that we're able to do? So, you know, public safety, where are we with that? We've talked a lot about mental health services. Aspects of the COVID, what was a part of the COVID priority was around this idea of emergency assistance to people. And so how are we, what are our programs around emergency assistance? And that's why I think for me, I'm, I'm like, oh yeah, I can move transportation over here because that's more working externally. But this one is more around, what is it that we as a city can do to really try to support the people that are here? What are the services that we want to prioritize providing to folks? And so is it, you know, we're prioritizing getting a lot of our ARPA-related projects that are really designed to provide direct service amenities in the community? So aspects of, like, our mental health counselors. Do we want it to be a priority that, also the emergency assistance stuff? We still have this whole list of public safety-related recommendations from the Public Safety Task Force, which not all of them relate to policing. And I always stress that, like, a lot of them actually did not relate to policing. A lot of them related to things that, like Councilmember Hansak mentioned, like, how are we interacting with our school districts? How are we recreation services, like, those kinds of, of things? And so that's why I'm, that's kind of what I was thinking in terms of where some of the potential, where we could fill in some of the gaps for this particular priority? If we were to, for, because we are moving a lot of the housing development out, maybe if we were to elevate transportation, but then we would focus more on, this is city-based services that we provide to people. Not turn us into a social service provider, but, because that's not, that's not what we are. But we do provide valuable resources to people and making sure that we're, we're prioritizing some of the innovative work that we have been trying to do. You know, again, like, even things like direct cash assistance. And where would something like, making sure that over the next few years, that program is spent and done, and we, we know how valuable it was? Like, that could be something that we will want to make sure that we incorporate into something that would be considered a livable community for, or belonging community. Okay, so it sounds like for this one, the, the transportation is still on the bubble, right? But it would be helpful if folks have any other specific items that they want to prioritize in terms of transportation, that you include those in the markup. You could just put it in as a comment. You don't have to actually draft language. It's helpful just so that we can kind of get an idea of what people would like to see. Transportation. It's the fifth, I know, it's the fifth. No, it's under livable. Yep, it's improved, mhm. Improved transportation planning and outreach to create a safer, more environmentally. environmentally sustainable and more racially and economically equitable community for all. Yeah.
To Alicia, how comfortable would you be to put transportation in the community economic development bucket? I mean, you know, I mean, I, there's, it sort of fits in my mind. I don't know if that's how the city works, but our planning department does planning around transportation, I guess. Anyhow, it's just a thought that if there wasn't enough substance for it to be its own, that I think that going into number six, community development.
Okay. So, and that makes sense? So it would be transportation, housing creation, and then whatever related, like, business-focused development activities and planning, that kind of stuff would fall.
Right, infrastructure in a sense. It's all together there.
No, that makes sense. Okay. And so were there any other points of discussion regarding six? I know we'll go through and clean it up and update it a little bit, quite a bit. I'm sorry. Two, we're on two, I'm sorry. I just had six on the brain. I know, I was trying to, obviously, I'm trying to get out of here. But I want to make sure that there's nothing else that stood out for folks. One thing that I will, we will need to follow up on is in terms of the goal, identifying programming needs in the community and develop approaches to meet those needs. So this one kind of came out of the prioritizing doing a community survey. And so we've added, you know, things over time, but if that is something that we are striving to prioritize again, I just want folks to be aware that there are some budgetary implications for that, so.
If, I thought just one word would help me, and that is identify and prioritize, because we can identify all we want, but again, it has to do with the budgetary implications, the cost benefit, so I would add prior, identify and prioritize.
We could just skip the first bit about programming needs. The point is to, is the approaches to meet the needs.
Mhm. Identify and prioritize. Oh, what Councilmember DeBala said was we could get rid of the programming needs and just say identify and prioritize approaches to meet community needs, emphasizing youth, family, seniors, and residents who tend to.
Although I, for one, would consider investing in another resident survey. The last one was, I know it's expensive. You're looking at me. The last one was in 2018, which was before COVID, and during COVID was not a time to do it, clearly. But it just, it is a thought. If that's, if program, if identify programming needs is, as you say, it's a key word, set of words for, are we going to do another resident survey and focus groups, which is expensive? But I, for one, would consider it.
You're leading me to think about, just gets placeholder, parking lot, for people to think about. I have been taking active note lately of the way that federal and ARPA dollars are being used by the county as different from the city and what that is meaning for our city programming. Lots of conversations lately, because we're sitting up in the northern part of the ward where a lot of people go to the county instead of the city, are trying to figure out what to do right now. And I feel like there's a really big need for the city to coordinate better, thinking about what we're trying to achieve and then what's happening and kind of figuring out, okay, therefore, should we cut back on this right now and then amp up later? Or, you know, just really need to maybe modify some of our approaches because of what's happening from the county side and that's filtering down, at least in our part of the city. It's got pretty big implications for us. So I don't know, you know, there's some kind of need to gather information for sure right now that we, I don't know the degree to which that's happening. It would take a lot of, not necessarily a lot, some key informant interviews could be very useful for that.
Specific to ARPA?
Specific to right now, just a lot, yeah, I guess it's, I guess it's specific to ARPA dollars. I don't know if it's just ARPA dollars, but there's a lot of funding flowing into different programs, and people are making different choices than they may have made in other summers, for example, and spring programming and tutoring and everything. It's really having massive implications for kind of people deciding where to go to get different things. And it could have budgetary savings even for us, actually. But anyway, just, something needs to be assessed there in some minimal way if it's not being done already. And it's a changing situation, right? It's going to be changing back and forth over the next two years, for sure. So if we haven't assessed it since 2018, it's, something needs to be done, but I don't recommend we spend lots of money doing it. Yeah, I don't, we just, like I said, parking lot, something, something needs to go in there.
But it does sound like that we still need to ensure that staff are going through the exercise of identifying and prioritizing approaches, right? So, and I thought I saw a coordinate, because I didn't like it, and that was in the COVID section. And it's actually something that is in the Community for All section as well as it relates to food insecurity. So one of the things that I do think is an important point that we need to really call out in this particular goal is the need for those partnerships with other nonprofits, other forms of government that can fill that gap. Keeping in mind, they're not, they may not be able to move as quickly as we are, but it's important for us to make sure that we know how to direct people. And we have a pool of resources or partners available that we can direct people to when they're in need. So I think that there are some ways that we can maybe take some of the language around coordinating with local nonprofits and community groups to providing assistance and identifying advocates nonprofits and community groups. I'm looking at what was some new language that was added on priority one. At the bottom of the strategy around making sure that there's access to emergency resources. Mhm. And so that may be another example of where we need to make sure that that coordination piece is relevant in the second priority. Okay. So in terms of race equity work, I'm going to spend a little time to get a little bit more specific here. Because I do feel like there's been lots of efforts to train staff. But I'm going to be candid, I'm not quite sure of, aside from what's happening with our race equity considerations, like, what else, where we need to go? I kind of feel like we're, we've met this race equity wall, where we talk about it, and maybe, and we're doing work, but we haven't really formalized systematic changes that we are governing ourselves to, to hold ourselves accountable to furthering race equity. Like, it's great that we have the paragraphs in our cover memos, but what are we really doing to ensure that we're advancing race equity? And how are we making sure that we're weaving these components into all of our processes? And so maybe it is looking at, and maybe this kind of goes back to the point that was raised earlier around ours, you know, our petition process, right? We pick some policies that we have that we think there may be an equity gap and then form some subgroups to really drill down on what are some things we need to do to kind of change some of those processes to make them more equitable. Again, I'm just making this up, but I do feel like we have the race equity work here, but it's not really.
This is not for the next two years.
Right.
If I, just might add, I mean, I hear what you're saying, it makes sense. When we have a desired outcome which says continued progress, that kind of, I spoke to you earlier about the squishiness of some of our results. And we need to, we, if we're going to have it, let's give something a little bit more practical and measurable than continued progress. Like you said, to select two or three, you know, areas that some specific progress can go on, and just, that's, that problem is clear here. It's also in other priorities where our outcome is squishy.
I'm sorry for my ignorance, but I'm not clear on what the council has done previously on this measure. And I don't know, for example, if the council discussed hiring someone temporarily or permanently, I presume you did, and how far that conversation got and where it got stuck. I mean, so I've, for years, worked on gender mainstreaming issues and other things related to this. And, you know, there's sort of a pretty clear process where you get to mainstreaming of these things, and you seek structural transformation within the government. And so I'm just wondering, I don't see the word mainstreaming here anywhere. I don't think we've gotten anywhere near that far. But I'm wondering if, you know, if you could enlighten me a little bit on that. I think it is very squishy. We, I like the addition, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it was, I'm not sure who put it in here, but, and it may have been even me, I don't know, but increased use of metrics to examine racial equity issues. And I think this really, really gets to the point to me, that we can't change something without measuring it first, and statements aren't going to go very far. So I know that, I haven't seen a lot of, I have seen some, some of our directors are increasingly using metrics to help us gather that information. I find it incredibly useful, but consistency would be key here, too. We have to know first before we can try to tackle something. If we were to increase metrics across the board and mainstream use of metrics on race and equity in every single one of the things that we did, that would go a very long way to becoming conscious of these considerations. But, so I think that piece, that addition is very handy, but not adequate. Anyway, maybe someone could help me give a historical background quickly.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that we were trying to do was hire a race, I know the former mayor really wanted to hire a race equity officer to kind of help with, and staff that was available at the time had expressed, hey, we need someone to kind of help us move further, right? So they've taken a lot of the trainings, they're now having to try to implement things, and it was, it was getting to be a little bit more challenging. I will say, we've made progress in that staff are considering equity as part of their, as part of their work. But the rubber really meets the road when you have to make those hard decisions around how to allocate resources. And if you, sometimes if you do them in an equitable way, it means that maybe your loudest voice is not going to get what they want. And so how is it, how are we creating the right kind of infrastructure for our staff so that we can develop the right system, so that they can be supported, so that they can have people, because right now they don't have the resources to actually work this in a more ongoing way and bringing in new approaches to address race equity? The rubber met the road when it came to budget. It was, it was about hiring another person. And so that's where a lot of these conversations wind up, when you're at the point where you're dealing with the budget, you want to put another person in because this is important work, but you have to balance the budget. So that is what, you know, again, staff has been doing a tremendous job with really trying to incorporate aspects of equity, and they've done a lot in terms of translation services at different events and creating more engagement with other parts of the city that normally had not been really engaged previously. So there's been a lot of work that's been happening. I think now it's about how do we kind of get to that next step? And maybe it is prioritizing bringing on a race equity officer, somebody to help with kind of moving this, moving this work forward. Maybe it is us identifying priority areas that we as a council want to focus on. So for example, we really moved forward the committee's work, and that was something I actually talked about constituent services, because the fact that we offer a stipend was, a lot of municipalities have been considering it, and they were, they're not doing it in an attempt to try to bring more people and have them engage more. So those are some steps that we've been able to do, but again, there's definitely going to be a need for us to do more.
Mayor, may I suggest that, could we, could we get input from our acting city manager on this point in particular? And is that appropriate in this dialogue? I would love to hear your opinion on this, because you've been deep in the city and seen all these changes happening, and you're in an acting role. Thanks.
Specifically on the equity piece? I was trying to think of the program, our former deputy city manager was spearheading a series of programs where she was requesting staff input, not requesting staff input, but asking staff to develop equity-based programs and trying to figure out ways to implement special projects. The only one I can really remember is the one I was involved in. What we did was utilize a map that I think our data analyst at the time had put together that showed the demographic, and demographic meaning in term generally, race, socioeconomic data, language spoken, gender preference, so on and so forth. The map included all of that detail. And we used the map, overlaid that map with a map of the stormwater infrastructure. Essentially, what we were trying to do is determine whether or not the last five years' worth of stormwater infrastructure had been in areas, we wanted to see if there was any difference demographically where that infrastructure had been placed and installed. I use that as an example, but it was happening in multiple departments. In fact, it had to happen by program definition in each department. I don't know the outcome of all of them, but what we determined in Public Works at the time is that we did do a pretty decent job of equitably allocating resources, stormwater resources, across the city. And so there was a concerted effort to try to take some of what's mentioned in the priority and make use of it in a practical way.
Just, I guess, an observation, and I hope it's, well, as Kara's spoken about metrics and the city manager here has talked about the work that you, the mapping that you did, it's, and then, and actually, and you, Mayor, talked some of the things that we have, we, the city, have done in terms of outreach to multifamilies, to renters, to different parts of the city. I guess my question is whether this should be broadened beyond race, whether there isn't some, you know, gay and lesbian, I mean, gender identity issues, if there are economic disparities, if there aren't some cultural barriers. I'm just wondering whether we're limiting ourselves if we, too much if we, in, if we couldn't expand it, and whether there would be a benefit in expanding it kind of along the ways that the city the ways that the city manager has talked about, that's been done in that one project.
I don't, I don't think I would be in favor of that. I mean, like, just because, like, the history, like, racism is like a systemic thing that hasn't improved, even if you look in schools, the LGBTQ plus community is doing better with the work that they're doing, and, you know, I talked to NAACP reps at Moving Ahead, than we're seeing when race is an issue. And so I would really prefer to keep race as its own separate thing.
I would strongly support Councilmember Foltzer's position on this. I think that historically, race has been a much more difficult thing to make progress on, issue to make progress on. And I, I think that it has been such a huge issue and continues to be such a huge issue that we should specify it as the, as being a special case that we really have to work on.
I want to, if I may, I want to echo those two sentiments very, very strongly. I, I hear some of what you're saying, Councilmember Gibson, in terms of there are certain groups of people in the city that the, while the city's in some ways more head-on addressed racial inequity issues and certain programming, we've, we've not done a good job with certain subgroups. And one of the groups I feel we've done a pretty, we've had a harder time doing is, let's say, the Spanish-speaking group at the northern end of the city that lives in my ward. Now, does that mean we haven't done well to address the needs of many of our Spanish-speaking pop, I think in Ward Six, we've, some of the things we've done have done a lot better for the Spanish-speaking population. But writ large, I think they've been left behind, if you will, as a city, and we've struggled to figure out how to help, support that particular group. But that's still a race and equity issue in a lot of ways. It's not exclusively, I do see, and I added this in here, it may or may not belong here, but I do see that one of the things that is shaping our particular Tacoma Park's particular race structural issues is a socioeconomic one. And it's, we've created a situation where we have a strong overlap between race and economic equality and sort of a big, you know, there's a strong correlation because we have deliberately set up rent stabilization in a way to ensure racial and socioeconomic diversity within our city. And there is this correlation. Well, why, why is it that we are not breaking through the racial divide by doing that? You know, what are we doing wrong? We haven't made enough headway on that in spite of trying to have us all live together. And there is a really big overlap. And why is, you know, we don't need to get to why is that necessarily, but we need to unpack that, and we need to, you know, break through those barriers, and they are at the core, they are rooted in our deep, deep racial inequality and structural issues, right? So.
So, so I agree with most of the other council members, and I would point out that some of the things that you're talking about are in other sections of this, are and should be in other sections of this, of this goal area. Before we got onto this, I was, I was going to say that the building it into all city operations is, is, is the, is, to me, the strategy at this point. And I'm actually surprised I didn't put that in here. I must have been thinking somebody else would. It is, to me, tied very much to outreach and engagement of all residents, which is just a, somebody said that along the way in the last few minutes. And I think it might be useful to double, double back with the senior staff and ask what you all think, having done these exercises like the stormwater mapping exercise. So those were useful exercises. Maybe we need, maybe we need the, a council briefing on the results of those, because we got some of it, but that was a year ago, right? And it wasn't this group. So maybe, maybe that's something that's useful to report on, and maybe it isn't.
It could be. The challenge is that the person who was largely responsible for it is no longer with the city, and so a lot of that insight is gone. I will say that there's a, Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a website that has...
Oh, right, so the cases are loaded up on the website. Why didn't I think of that?
All of the cases and some of the outcomes.
Yeah, so if people go to the race equity section of the city website, some, all of these cases are loaded up there. So that, what I'm suggesting is maybe looking at, that is a place for us to spark where we think is, where we want to go next. And then my, my last point was I was under the impression, perhaps wrong, that the recent city manager had been working on something specific to the racial considerations section of the city. You see people shaking their heads, no. Okay, never mind that. He and I, yeah, he and I had talked about it a couple of times, because there have clearly that, you know, it's great that we're doing it, and it sure could be done better.
There may be, I'm not aware of it.
Well, maybe double check with Greg and Roz, and maybe I'm just wrong and it never actually got committed to paper. That's entirely possible. So never mind that thought.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, well, I'm perfectly comfortable leaving, leaving this racial equity where it is. I just, if this is a welcoming, we're talking about a welcoming community, I just want to think broadly. Who else have, do we want to, I mean, we had talked about immigrants. I mean, is, do, is there, are there other parts of our community populations that we, that we want to weave in here someplace?
No particular?
You know, I mean, whether it's LGBTQ, whether it's culture, language barriers, et cetera. I mean, they are in other places, but again, in this section around welcoming people with all of their diversity.
Yeah, yeah, so take a look and see if I'm wrong. I don't mean that secondly.
So unless we want to just have some sleeping bags and just decide that tonight, this is going to be where we're going to stay tonight, I want to move us forward, and my hope is that we can still get out by 11:15. So, and I think these other items, the first two were the ones that really required a little bit more discussion. The third item in terms of the fiscal, fiscally sustainable government. The one question of discussion that I had was around, there's, there was lots of language included around measurement. And I wondered if, and it was kind of spread out, so it would be helpful if we could maybe think through whether or not all of these different, oh, and I should have started out by reading what the original was. Fiscally sustainable government was explore and advocate at county and state levels for expanded funding flexibility for municipalities beyond property taxes and continue to advocate for long-term solutions for tax, to tax duplication. Explore ways to provide property tax adjustments to residents in need. Advocate at county and state levels for changes in property taxes to assist residents in need and work for a more equitable property tax assessment system. Continue to build on improvements in the budget process, presentation of budget information and communication to residents. Adopt sustainable investment and banking policy practices, and then maintain adequate reserves at the, in the various city reserve funds for long-term fiscal sustainability. So the, without belaboring this particular point, there was just two things that I saw in some of the feedback that folks provided. It seems like the more, the priorities that were there were, for the most part, maintained, or in terms of the goal statements, but the, with a little bit of tweaking, with emphasis on revenue diversification. So whereas in the prior council, the priority was around really trying to address tax duplication issues, in this round, we really are trying to seek out information regarding other sources of revenue, be it federal, county, or state-level grants, be it really having a very hard look at where we are not advancing in terms of leveraging, or really optimizing the use of our commercial space that could increase our, our tax base in terms of commercial property revenues. And that's economic development, and how we maybe need to think about, or at least be presented on different types of revenue options that may be available to us. So the only, again, the only point, and we don't really need to talk about this, but there was a lot that related to measurement and fiscal accountability and how the budget was presented that maybe overlapped. So it would be helpful for the measurement components to kind of think about how they may be, do we necessarily need them in every single piece, or is this something that could be included as part of aspects of how we are making improvements to our budget presentation process? And that would be including things related to developing measures and targets that could clearly communicate how our programs that we're funding are achieving the intended Okay. So the next one, again, I'm fighting to get us out of here. So the next one is the environmentally sustainable community. And, and this one is, the original was climate change mitigation, work towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. Climate change resilience, improve our ability to adopt and be, adapt and be resilient to climate change, manage our community's natural resources sustainably, protect, maintain, and improve the health of our urban forests, natural resources, and water quality with an emphasis on equity. So the main questions that I had in terms of some of the feedback that was provided here was how do some of the proposed strategies overlap? So like, for example, things like the heat island, you know, how are we, I think there was a point around addressing aspects of the heat island, is that something that should be part of the goal design to, instead of the climate change resilience? Oh, no, it was, nope. It's late and I'm starting, my notes are coming together. So the heat island was part of the strategies for the goal related to managing our natural resources.
No, it's under resilience.
It's under resilience.
And you might be thinking of the overlap with trees.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
Can I?
Or do you want to go on?
No, go ahead, go ahead, because that was the one that was...
I was just going to say, I can see where, where, quick, looking at it quickly, one might think, oh, that has such a strong overlap with our tree goal. But, you know, there are lots of other ways to also address heat islands. Cities paint certain parts of the city white to address that issue too, like pavement might be painted white. We could create shade structure, shade structures as separate from trees that might be needed in areas where it's just very difficult to plant trees, but pedestrians are standing outside for long periods of time. There are also a lot of cities right now that, and I don't, I actually, pardon my ignorance, but I'm not sure if it's referring necessarily to heat islands, but it'd be, as related, would be making sure there are water stations throughout the city in some of the hottest areas, little fountain areas, other things where people can get access to water quickly to cool down. So those would be all different things that wouldn't necessarily just relate to trees.
Okay.
But do relate to resilience.
Yeah, so it was a draft strategy for, under resilience, and my question was, how does that relate to the tree canopy piece? And water and so forth.
And I think the answer, and I think the answer is that it's more than just trees. However, many of the things that Kara, Councilmember Hanzak just named, are not, quote, environmental in the conventional sense. And that doesn't bother me, but I just want to point it out.
You're right. I mean, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't probably call this one environmental sustainable as the name of the upper level. We might want to talk about that, but, I mean, it still can fall under a similar, similar category, but I might call it something else.
I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful, I think it would be helpful if you, like, came out and said the things that you just said here personally, because if I read this, I also would have been thinking trees. And so I think that it would be helpful if you, you know, spelled some of that out, maybe.
I also would welcome, I mean, I, this is not my particular area of expertise. I do work on climate resilience issues in really low resource settings, but I bet you we have some resident experts in the city who could give us some really good advice on couching this stuff, people who are working on adaptation and resilience. I, I mean, I, I know we've done better in some ways, we've had champions in the government for a while, working on mitigation and climate change issues, and resilience is hard to, hard to do. I don't know, I don't have the answer, but we could work on that, yeah.
I can look back at the resilience section of the climate action plan, because I got to tell you at the moment, I can't remember what it said, and see how they phrase it.
The Cadenus Report might have, might be another...
Yeah, that's the thing.
That has some really good stuff about, about resilience.
And one other question that I had about this one was around in extreme weather events, residents have access to cooling or heating areas or appliances for emergency electricity. So we often do offer the community center, of course, in extreme heats for folks who may be without, there are other state programs, so we may just want to, like, things like LaHeep and the like, so we may want to, again, this may be another area where if the issue is access to cooling stations that the city provides, yes. If it is how we can make sure that residents have access to, like, window units and things like that, if, if there are some extreme weather conditions and their power is out for whatever reason, then that would require coordination. So I think that when we're thinking through the strategies, being able to, and it says explore, so it's fine, but being able to make sure that if we know that those kinds of, that we have to work with partners, and it's not something that the city would necessarily be able to provide independently, then we may want to make sure we include that coordination strategy component as part of what's there.
Can I just, I wanted to say something about the stormwater stuff in here. If we're hoping that this document is going to guide our budget process, I think we need to be mindful of the message that we're sending through this document. And so, you know, we went to the trouble to hire the stormwater, to do the stormwater resiliency plan, and so I would like us to consider that maybe that's our focus with stormwater right now, is to go forward with that stormwater plan. stormwater right now, is to go forward with that stormwater plan. Yeah, go ahead.
Which version are you looking at? Because if you're looking at the one that Jesse just handed out, or are you looking at the one that came in the packet?
The one that came, I guess I'm looking at the one that came in the packet.
Yeah, so it may be that that's been addressed.
Okay.
When you look at the new version.
No, you know, the stormwater study is just that, it's a, it's a study. It does, it's supposed to offer some recommendations to address these issues in two particular sites, two, just, just two sites, in, more in depth, as well as maybe a suite of other recommendations in terms of how property owners.
Yeah, I was, I was there too.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that it was, it wasn't a full-fledged plan.
No, but it is doing what you're saying. It's going to make specific recommendations for two different sites, and then make general recommendations for other sites. And so what I'm saying is, we decided to hire a consultant because we wanted them to make recommendations, and so it would make sense to me that our priority right now for stormwater management would be to enact those recommendations that were made by the consultants that we hired.
So the revised, revised version says, build on the results of the study too, and then it lists a bunch of different approaches.
Yeah, we want to leverage those, whatever, whatever recommendations they come up with.
I, I have a couple of other, were you done with the stormwater?
Yeah.
I have a couple of, of points that we're not going to settle tonight, but that I wanted to flag for people to think about. So in the first, climate change mitigation, there's a suggested addition by one of the council members to do a greenhouse gas emissions analysis for city operations alone, which is different from the cog-coordinated, citywide greenhouse gas emissions inventory that gets done automatically and gets sent to the city. I personally don't think this is necessary, but I wanted to explain the difference to people so that you can think about whether, what your focus ought to be, whether, whether part of what we need to know is, is what our city operations produce and how we can address that further than we already have, which I think is the point of the, of the proposal, is to get a handle on what we can do more about city operation. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm taught, actually, the person who proposed it, I just brought it up because I was afraid we were going to buzz right by it. And I think it's an important point.
Yeah, I, a couple of things. One is, I don't know what you've all done in the past, and I think the city can be a model to the rest of the city, to the residents. We are a model, and we should be a model in terms of how we plant trees, that we use native plants. We should be a model in terms of how we treat stormwater. We should be a model in terms of how we mitigate the, the impact of, of carbon and our carbon footprint. And so I think that this helps us not only know what we're doing and improve upon it as we can, but also to model to the, to the city and other cities that, that we are doing. I know one, when I was looking at different plans, different cities, I don't know if it was Rockville or Gaythersburg, but they, they had, one, one of the cities actually, they, they counted against the city in terms of budgetary dollars because of what they were contributing to, to the carbon footprint. Anyhow, it's just another.
Say it again.
Well, I'll have to, I'll dig it up, I'll tell you later. Anyhow, the fact of the matter is, you know, that cities do look at what they do and how they can mitigate against our carbon footprint. And I think that we may have a great success story, and maybe we can improve upon it, but it's a model to, it should, we should do it periodically to look what we're doing and how we can do it better.
Okay, so I wanted, I wanted to flag that because it, it is a point for everyone to think about, and I wanted to keep going to the, to the third one, which is about natural resources sustainability. And again, not to steal the thunder from any other council member, I wanted to point out the new one, two, three, fourth bullet, which talks about assess and strengthen ecosystem health and services. My concern and question, and then, and then my, I have two questions, one on that and one on the last bullet about review staffing needs to leverage collaboration, which I don't understand what that, what that means. But on the, on the fourth, and maybe, maybe there's a better way to say it, and then I'll understand it. But the fourth one, assess and strengthen, assess ecosystem health and services, if that is, if that's literally what you mean, that's expensive to do, and I'm not sure what it gets us, so you probably don't mean an economic analysis.
Ecosystem health and services.
Is a term, yeah.
And I guess it could, I may have abused the term, but.
Can you put your microphone?
I may have abused the term. There are different ways to, first of all, identify that you have ecosystem services. First thing is we, what the, and what that is. I mean, your soil does something, your, your tree canopy does sequesters, your, your, your soil and the plants help manage stormwater. The plants do biodiver, offer biodiversity which helps our environment. So those, all, all those, and they can be measured probably in dollars and cents, which I wasn't proposing, but to first identify what we have and value them and, and see if there's deterioration or not. In other words, if we don't look at what invasives, for example, are taking over Dorothy's woods or our city parks, then, then, then that particular environmental service will be lost. So it's a way of maybe cataloging and identifying, and then valuing it and protecting it, maybe a better way of saying it than what I have.
Okay, because, because when I read that, dollar signs were flashing, and I got.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we want to get into that.
The Tree Committee, three, four years ago, did a brochure that you may have seen about the, quote, ecosystem services that, of trees in Tacoma Park. So if you're meaning things like that.
That's one, yeah, one element of it.
One element to that. What other elements are you thinking about?
As I, as I said, the soil, the streams, the biodiversity of our, our plants are all a part of our ecosystem. It's much, we've done a great job identifying the value, protecting the value of our tree canopy, but we can't stop there. We've got, I mean, there's everything underneath it in terms of animals. Oh, and, I mean, so we, below the tree canopy, there are other natural resources that are valuable to us to make this a livable city.
Okay, thank you. Last one, was that you, review staffing needs to leverage regular collaboration and integrated strategies?
Yes.
And so presuming that you're suggesting we might need more staff, is that what that amounts to?
I'm suggesting the staff work together, cross-programme, cross-program.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so we can, we can work on words for this.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, are you?
I'm, I'm done, thank you.
I don't want to cut you off. I do, I do want to get back to, very critically, I think, and I want to make a point here so that we've all heard me say this, and hear what you think about this. I mean, in so much as this priority does inform our budget process, which I hope it does, and we have, in some ways, with the modifications we have currently made, we have reduced some of the stormwater language, and to Councilmember Foltzer's point, and yet we invested heavily in moving forward on stormwater, and what can we do in the next two years, and this is supposed to be a practical document. I just want to make, especially since Councilmember Small is not here, we haven't had a conversation, but I know he represents Ward Six, which is a heat island all by itself. I just want to say that, you know, somehow, it is extremely important to me that the city goes well beyond stormwater, well beyond all of our fabulous climate mitigation strategies, and all the things that I see listed under all of the other goals under this environmentally sustainable, to deal with the fact that lives are going to be lost in the near future, and we don't have two years to wait to start addressing these things, even if all we're doing is coordinating services with the county better and faster and more efficiently. We must be prepared for not only the next, like, big disaster that comes, where we may have bigger power outages, or people freezing for several days, who knows? But, but the thing is, is that we're going to have more of these extreme events, and people say, oh, my God, that's a 500-year event. Well, it's happening today. And so I, I just, and I'm not just talking about disasters, but I just, I just really feel strongly that this language has been missing, and I want us to make sure it's, it's strongly worded enough, it's big enough, taken up enough space in these strategies, and that we've got some clear outcomes related to it that are as separate from stormwater. And I, and that is not to say that I don't think ecosystem services and stormwater are extremely, and climate mitigation are extremely urgent and important, but we, the city government, are most responsible for the here and now in keeping our residents alive, and I think we may not be doing that adequately at the moment. Thanks.
So I'm trying to stay true to my word, and it's now 11:06. We're almost there. So it sounds like in terms of this particular, the, the environmentally sustainable community, there's going to be some, some conversations around those. Looking at Councilmember DeBaul and Councilmember Gibson, and Councilmember Hanzak.
Excellent.
Excellent. Okay, so engage responsive, service-oriented government. So there was a desire to get rid of, and what was there originally, I'll turn about as fair play, hire and onboard a new city manager, improve city communications with residents to adapt innovative culturally appropriate initiatives to improve public engagement and collaboration with residents, particularly with residents who face, who may face barriers with participating municipal government, improve policies and processes to enhance resident interaction with the city government, including requests for government services, complaint systems, and code enforcement, put in place improvements and review the overall structure of proposed existing council-appointed committees, which we've done, check, review and reform the city's approach to public safety to ensure racial justice, and work towards a safer, more livable community for all residents, and improve service, service delivery, and reduce administrative burden by updating internal policies, IT infrastructure, and software. So given where we are organizationally, I do think that we should have a goal regarding not just hiring a city manager, but making sure that we're able to have a transparent process for bringing on the new permanent city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's also another thing that's very important for the implementation of all of our priorities, and something that I know that the council supports, but I, I think we need another goal, which is to ensure a continued high quality of staff by providing competitive compensation, annually reviewing work performance, and recognizing superior performance when merited.
Give me one second, I'm just looking.
Yes, no problem, you won't find it in there.
I know, I was like, we didn't have anything related to staff, morale, community, no.
Didn't you put, insert that into the comments, or was it just in an email?
It was a separate email.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, I'm like the bad student that doesn't do his homework in.
Support that statement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it belongs.
Okay, so we, yep, thank you, sir.
I've words missed it since I sent it out on email.
Okay, okay, so it sounds like we, a goal for, as it relates to staff, staff morale, and creating a, in essence, I'm totally paraphrasing because it's late, but making sure that we are, we are, have a good place to work, a competitive place to work.
Right, I don't, I would say that it's, you know, just to fix morale, I don't think it's a morale issue, I think it's bigger than that.
Okay, was there, so there was a, there were some aspects of improved policies and process to enhance resident interaction with city government and the council. So there were aspects of council engagement included, including review and strengthen the process of the new, of the new council member onboarding and ongoing support for staff, for council members, and ensuring that all city staff and managers are responsive to residents as a way of doing business, including tracking residents' requests and responses. For that particular one, I think the, for that particular item, I think it's really important, when we say folks are responsive to residents, that we define what that is. You can be responsive, but, but if someone doesn't want necessarily accept what you have to say, you, you, you know, so what do, what do we mean? So I think that's, that's something that we will need to make sure, particularly that we all have a realistic expectation of what level of responsiveness we are expecting from our staff to provide residents. And then from there, keep in mind that if, if we want, and I'm just using this as an example, but if we want Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks to be on call for everyone in the community whenever they have a question, we have to pay this person for that, right? So there is, I think that, you know, when we are thinking about the community engagement components and responsiveness, and I think it's okay for us to have aspects of responsiveness and making sure that that's happening as a goal, but I think it may warrant, in terms of a strategy, not just saying we want staff to be responsive, but for us as a council to have realistic expectations of what a proper response is, and then we are able to communicate that to our residents.
Yeah.
And the technology helps that happen, too.
Yep, communicating, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, we had the app, MyTKPK, you know, maybe starting to have some, when we get more staff, start looking at, you know, who's using the app? How are people reporting? Are we able to more easily track when responses go out? Because you typically would respond through, close out certain, certain tickets through, through aspects of the app. But are people using it? Or are people emailing and calling?
Because it doesn't work.
Because it doesn't work? Or they don't know how to use it? Or? Because it doesn't work, or they don't know how to use it, or, you know, and what is, you know, so I think that that is something, you know, and again, I hate to kind of be on both sides of the fence, but I, I, I would be remiss in not saying that one of the joys and the pains of living in Tacoma Park is how active certain aspects of our, certain segments of our community are, and so the expectations that some members of our community have in terms of staff time and response times, it's, I talked to colleagues in other communities, they're like, "What? You get, they, they could get a call from police chief in like, less than 24 hours? I live in DC, it takes three months."
I think it's helpful to communicate out, like, what, what an expectation should be for different departments, but I'm not in favor of that, like, automated email that tells you, "I'll be back with you in, within 48 hours," that's not helpful, that does not make me feel better, but, you know, just, if, if we would know, and if it was, like, in general, you know, maybe, maybe it varies by department, how long it usually takes to get back to somebody, but that would be helpful to have on the websites, and, and might just, maybe they are being responsive, you know, like, maybe within the definition of how quickly they are able to respond, they are being responsive, but defining what responsive is for a department would be helpful.
Yeah, and, and too, I think it's important to think of responsiveness based on the actual ask. If you're sending me, "Hey, I want to know answers to 35 questions that require in-depth research around our stormwater policies," that may take longer than someone saying, "Hey, what's the status of my speed bump?" Right? So, just bring that up to say, we, you know, we will need to do a little bit more in terms of the strat, like, the, the, this reads a little bit more like a goal, and less like an actual approach to improve our response times, and so, that's just something that I think we'll need to consider. Councilmember Hanzak?
No, I, I, I was about to say what you just said about the goal, I, I think, I think that one, the, the outcome that is under that particular goal is more related to the goal, but it doesn't, it doesn't adhere to this, this particular strategy, it, it would need to be moved up to the level of a goal with its own outcome, about defining what it means to be responsive, being a service-oriented government, and that would, if, if that were something we were going to prioritize over the next two years, it's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty big thing to take on by itself, but a very important one for government, local government.
Councilmember DeBala?
I was gonna comment on, on something else.
Okay.
Okay, so in the spirit of add one, take one off, the committee's goal, in my opinion, could be reduced to the one strategy that could be included under probably this goal we're just talking about right now, resident interaction, interaction with the city, and I would propose to draft that if people think that's a good idea.
Yeah, no, we agree.
This is, what's the strategy, what goal?
I'm talking about goal, the fourth goal, about council-appointed committees. Because I, I, I take, I, I take it that we are adding things, and I don't know, I think we need to be taking stuff off the, off the list, too, yeah.
I wonder.
And so, some of the things that people are talking about are great to listen to, but I might, when it comes to it, say, "That's not a priority for me," but go ahead.
Well, no, I just wonder, I mean, the, the city has been working for quite some time on committees, committee issues, and yet, and yet it is also, I think we can all acknowledge that we hear a lot from people, they're, they're not, you know, we have, we have more, more length to go. I wonder whether that's still not, from what people are hearing from residents, not a higher priority, if you will, than, let's say, a lack of service-oriented responsiveness, I think, I'm not saying that we don't have a long way to go there, too, but I, I guess I would ask if people are hearing that. I, I personally, in my ward, what I hear the most is related to committees and versus the service orientation, but I don't know whether that's true in other places across the city.
To me, committees is one important engagement tool, but it's not the only one.
Absolutely, yes, and I'm not suggesting otherwise, I'm just saying, but that particular bullet that's been added about responsiveness.
Yeah, and I agree with you about the comparing the two, if I had to add one, I'm just saying, I don't know that it needs to be its own goal, but.
Oh, right, yeah, no, okay, I'm not, yeah, I, I might take it away, I hate to say that, but I might take it, the, the, the other bullet, the.
Oh, yeah, I think I might agree with you.
Yeah. Not because I don't think it's important, but, yeah.
I don't know that I hear about committees from anybody other than people that are on the committees.
Or people that have previously been on committees.
Right.
So, I'll take a crack at drafting something, and we'll pick it up next week.
Okay.
I mean, I also, I'm sorry, I also think that, like, it's, it's, it's already in there, like, it's already in the rules that we're supposed to be listening to the committees, right? And so, like, do we need to prioritize it? Like, no, like, we already did the work, we just need to follow the rules that we have already written for ourselves, or, you know, that were already written for us.
Okay, so I want to, we have nine minutes. I want to just move us through to the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. So, we have already talked about moving the housing and transportation items here. And I just want to make sure that there aren't any other priorities that we want to include here. I see the Washington Advances, the Minor Master Plan, which is a biggie, again, keeping in mind, over the next two years. So I think, once we kind of clean up the housing pieces and the transportation pieces, this one will be, will be set. And it would include three, three main goals. Basically, planning and prepare for development as it relates to our business community, paraphrasing but encouraging housing creation, making sure that we have the appropriate mechanisms in place to set the stage for that, and then transportation, or transit-oriented development, and how we can make sure that our transportation infrastructure works. That's what we'll move over.
So, there's already a section under the first goal about the housing develop, part of the housing development strategic plan, so that does get, need to get sorted out, so.
Yeah.
And I apologize for not having done it yet, but I'm reading about the Minor Master Plan Process strategy, and thinking about other county-related planning and development issues that keep coming up with the city. I would like to propose adding a strategy that says something along lines of coordinate with county on, you know, planning and development and zoning issues as they come up, and I'll write that out, I'm thinking about the ADUs and, and whatever spins out after Thrive that we have to pay attention to.
We should just make one on Thrive.
Well, I was gonna say that, but then I wasn't sure if it was gonna be, I mean, it is, so, let me take a crack at it, and I apologize for not having thought of it sooner.
No, I didn't, I didn't think about it either. Oh, so, and part of implementation of, or moving forward with steps on Thrive, what is it? Yes, there's a lot of things that are coming out around things like pedestrian safety plans and zoning modifications, that kind of stuff. Okay.
I just want to suggest that, that another strategy be under that first goal about development, and that is, kind of going back to our obvious concern about budget, is that, in a discussion that I had with Ira Kohler, that evaluate these housing and economic development programs and services to prioritize those most cost-effective, in other words, to look at the cost-effectiveness of these various programs. Again, it's a prioritization, and so I'll come up, I'll put, I'll do a comment or something to put that in, if that is kosher. Yes, six, goal one.
Of housing and economic development programs, and how would they, what would the method be? How would you do that?
Well, you, you have, we have various programs to increase.
Councilmember Gibson, if you can turn on your mic.
Yeah. All, I mean, all of our, our, our housing programs, particularly those that, that we contribute to, can house a certain number of people and a cost, so it's just a matter of figuring out, I mean, we want to increase our housing opportunities, and we should know which of our strategies, which of our programs are most effective based on the price, the cost, cost, cost benefit of.
I see what you're saying, so contributing a small amount of money to a big project that produces a lot more quality units, like Hilton Manor, is a cost-effective.
Right.
Okay, I think the reason I have, I'm hesitant is because opportunities don't all come up, like, it's not like we get five choices this month or this year, and we get to pick the best one, they don't roll in that way, and, and that's why I'm trying to figure out how in practice he would actually do that. We have to think that.
I'm not, we could talk some more about that, I mean, I, I, we, we want to look for opportunities as well as opportunities come to us, but we want to look for opportunities that we, that are affordable, that have the biggest bang for the buck, to expand our, expand and retain our, our housing options.
I'm gonna go through it, too, I know we're all saying we want to go back through it, there's a couple places where the strategies feel more like goals to me, like, that they need to be moved up because they're not specific enough about an action that we're supposed to take, and then also, I just want to say, on the, under six, the complete the Minor Master Plan process, I would like to change the wording that makes it sound less like we have a lot of influence in it, because, like, from there, it sounds like we're the ones that are doing it, and that's unfortunately not true, so make sure that, that, that the way that these are written doesn't make a resident that's reading them think, like, "Oh, man, like, Tacoma Park City Council is gonna get in there and do that Minor Master Plan, they're gonna do a great job of it," that it's art, we're gonna try to influence that, that process.
Yeah, but I do think it's important for us to keep in mind that staff have to work on these, right? So, it's not the case that even though the county is dealing, doing most of the master planning, you know, every table sitting Alex was at, he was going around with them, he was helping to organize things, so if we're thinking about the priorities from the perspective of where, if Alex is one of our only planning people, where would we want him focusing his time when it comes to planning activities? And, and that would really be, our biggest priority planning activity right now is the Minor Master Plan.
Okay, I appreciate that, and that you think that he's having an influence there. That's good. It's a, it's a big, it's a big mountain to climb, so I'm glad that he's in there doing that.
Yeah, I mean, he's at least keeping us on track with knowing where things are and what we may need to do and how we may need to intervene. Okay, well, thank you all so much for working through this process. Okay, Councilmember Gibson?
What are our marching orders, I guess?
Yes.
And are, are we, to, to make edits, or are we doing separate, how, how would you, how should we move forward?
So, in terms of next steps, there are a couple of items that I think might make sense for folks to kind of break off a little bit into some aspects of subgroups around folks who feel really strongly about things, so I can work with Councilmember Hanzak on the COVID-related item, just so that we can figure out how to structure some of those things. The live, the belonging item, it seems like that overlaps quite a bit with aspects of the COVID one, so, Councilmember Hanzak, and, I'm sorry? Yeah, because I know it's gonna, it's gonna overlap a lot with the COVID one. We can just make sure that when we're talking through the COVID one, that we're working it, working in the pieces where we may need to work in, tweak item number two. The fiscally sustainable government. Yeah, is there someone else that's interested in working on two?
I would work on two.
Okay. So for the fiscal, fiscally sustainable government. It's number three. Not really, I think I can clean this one up. I think, Councilmember Gibson, I think the, the biggest feedback that would be useful on this one is your feedback around the measurement piece.
The baseline?
Mm-hmm, and where that stuff may need to go.
So you're specifically talking about the.
Yeah, strategies, like, provide better fiscal account of, like, that goal.
Strategies identify performance baseline and center.
Yeah, that's under this goal, it's basically like a whole budget reporting piece. It's the fiscally sustainable government goal, and there.
Yeah, number one, the first one. No, second one.
It's the second one.
The new, second one, about ARPA dollars.
Three.
Goal number three, and the strategy has to do with measurement.
Yep, it's all of the new pieces that really relate a little bit more to budget reporting, and if that could be.
So you're saying, clean it up, or?
I'm, yeah, so I'm saying, how does what you're adding here relate to the goal that we had around continue to build on improvements in the budget process, presentation of the budget, information and communication to residents? And is it that these are goals, or is it that they are actual strategies? And how are they different from what is the goal that's already around improving the budget presentation process?
So what is it, what is it that you?
So right now, the goals are manage the city's ARPA dollars to assure responsible fiscal, this is what was added, manage cities, federal ARPA dollars to assure responsible fiscal management, support city and its residents in its pandemic and economic recovery efforts, comply with federal requirements to meet ARPA plan goals, the other goal is provide greater fiscal and policy accountability in the implementation of council priorities by identifying baseline of performance under selected goals and strategies, from which performance targets may be identified and progress monitored, strategies. from which performance targets may be identified and progress monitored, strategies identify performance baselines.
The one piece that, that, I'll, I'll, I'll work this, I do think that identifying baselines of three to five key goals or strategies, I guess I would say that for, for all of our, that's with the priorities, all of the priorities, that I thought that we should have baselines for the three, so I guess I put, I put it in the wrong place. Again, in order to help...
Can you, can you put on your mic?
Yeah, yeah, it's all right. Let me look again at this.
Yeah, no, it's...
I'll look again at this when I have it in front of me.
No worries, it's, it's late in my eyes, a blur, too. I'm, I'm Wilton. So, the environmentally sustainable community, so what I recall, Councilmember Hanzak, Councilmember Dibala, and Councilmember Gibson?
Three of us need to work on it. Yeah.
If, if Dibala and Gibson would like to take that on, I feel I've given my written inputs and had my say, if you'd like to work on crafting it, and then if you, you know, feed it back to me, I'm fine with that, too. What's, I can't hear you.
I did actually send you an email with some suggestions.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I didn't...
A couple of days ago, about the Heat Island part and the emergency, so yes, we will do that.
Okay, let me double check that, I put, my apologies, we talked about it a little bit, yeah.
Okay, engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, and so it looks like, Councilmember, I, I think maybe, I have, I have your, your item, and you're gonna take care of the interaction with the city, and then I'll clean up the city manager stuff.
Okay, that sounds good, I, I know I read it down.
I got it here somewhere, too.
Oh, I see where it's at.
All right, and then I will follow up, particularly with Councilmember Small, about item number six, because I know that's an area he's interested in.
Okay.
Six, the community development for an improved... Okay, so if I can get, because we need to make sure that we're able to make some progress...
We need to post something?
Yep, I would like for us to be able to at least post a working draft. So if folks can get...
And you found it, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll get together on the environmental, I guess?
We might have to do it by email, but yes.
If I can, if I can get everyone's stuff, because I'll need to post it, it'll need to be kind of cleaned and ready to post by, no later than Tuesday. So if I can get everyone's feedback by Saturday, like, end of day, Sunday morning, and then that way, I can make sure that there's nothing that we need to really kind of clean up, so we'll have things ready to go.
Could you say that again, when, when do you need this?
If I can get it end of day, Saturday.
Okay.
It's, it will be hard, I will try and, I'm gonna be traveling out of town.
Friday? Because you're driving tomorrow, right?
Driving, and then, yeah.
Friday, you and I...
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, yeah, I'm, I'm gone tomorrow.
And we could just, we could talk it, yeah.
It's not a good time.
Yeah, that's right.
So you and I, we're gonna do it Friday.
Yeah, we could talk about it.
We'll have to, we'll have to do it over the phone, then, yeah.
We'll just make sure we schedule our time.
No, no.
I mean, it could be.
No.
Okay, so I think we have our marching orders. I'm sorry I got us out even later than I anticipated, but if there are no other questions, thoughts, concerns, can I bang the gavel?
Please.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.